Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I'd like to walk into the Exeter Planning Board meeting of 7:13:23 in the NOAC room of the Exeter Town Office Building and set off by introducing those folks that are on the board this evening. And I'm Langdon Plummer, I'm chairman of the board. And I'd ask our vice chair, Erin, to continue, please.
Erin Brown.
Gwen English.
Nancy Palanger, Select Board Representative.
Pete.
Artie Cameron.
John Gruder.
And that's it for this evening, I'm not sure about...
Jen.
But these are all regular members. So Jen is not... Did you hear anything from Jen, Dave?
I have none.
Okay. First order of business I want to do is, I just have a public notice here that Douglas and Christine Rupp, 24 Powder Mill Road, Planning Board Case Number 2311. Our schedule was scheduled this evening, last item on the agenda. They've been rescheduled for August 2nd, excuse me, August 24th, 2023. So that's the Powder Mill, 24 Powder Mill Planning Board Case Number 23-11. Will not be heard tonight, it's going to be on the 24th of August in 2023, so that's next month. If you'd like to see that, come back. All right, and the next thing we'll do, we do have minutes to approve, but because of the amount of business, I'd ask for a motion to table till our next meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Voice vote, those in favor, please keep a saying "aye."
Aye.
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 Any names?
Aye.
Substances? The ayes carried, thank you very much.
I know.
Throw that to the back. And we're having a continued public hearing. Application of Blind Tiger LLC for a site plan review for the proposed reconstruction of the clubhouse and adding parking at the Exeter Country Club. The subject property is located at 58 JD Hill Avenue in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. It's on tax-mat parcel number 51-1, excuse me, 52-1, and it's Planning Base Board Case Number 23-2. It's a continued public hearing, so I would ask Dave if he would like to start us off with his comments, please.
Sure, thank you. Initially, the applicant submitted a site plan review application, plans, and supporting documents dated January 24th, 2023, that were given to you prior. Revised plans, supporting documents, were submitted on April 28th and again on May 24th. Those materials have been provided for, have already been previously provided for your review. The technical review committee meetings were conducted on February 18th and May 11th, and copies of the TRC comment letter and the two UEI comment letters have also previously been provided for your review. The applicant appeared before the board at the June 8th, 2023, to initially present their proposal, and subsequently, the board acted to table further discussion on the application until June 22nd, and also scheduled a sitewalk for Wednesday, June 21st. The sitewalk was well attended by the members of the public. Concerns were raised with respect to drainage buffering, how and when previous site improvements had occurred on the site, and some traffic concerns. And after the discussion with the applicant following the sitewalk, they decided to request to be tabled to tonight's meeting in order to address the outstanding issues. Revised plans had not been, because I was on vacation last week, revised plans had not been, had not gotten by the time I wrote this memorandum, but subsequently, UEI has reviewed it again via email. We haven't gotten official, that would be their third review, I think, third review letter. I think they've had review letters. They didn't, you know, they kind of thanked the applicant for addressing, you know, their concerns. There was just maybe a couple of, you know, minor outstanding issues, but... And they've pretty much addressed the requests, they can go through them of how they addressed them. But we, you know, we looked at all the concerns and left the drainage to... You know, drainage was the big concern, and I'll let the engineer describe what they've done. They've added some curving, they, you know, I pointed out a little erosion issue on the site that might not capture the curving, and they added curving to that to capture that coming down, added a couple, two twin catch basins and so forth. But they can explain that to you in more detail. The applicant is requesting several waivers from the board's site plan and subdivision regulations in conjunction with the application, and they are outlined in the enclosed waiver request. You should have a copy of that with all the waivers listed and their reasoning behind it. They'd be happy to speak with that. In the event that the board decides to act on their request, I, you know, am prepared with suggested concessions of approvals, so if you so choose. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Before we start with Mr. Scammon, I just want to let the folks know, we did have a call this afternoon. A person would like to testify, they have COVID. And in the interest of safety and health of people, I've allowed them to be on a Zoom. So we are on a Zoom hearing this evening, just for your information, it's no secret. It's not common, it shouldn't be posted, but because of the circumstances, I felt it was appropriate to allow them to provide their testimony. That to this board is very important, so we'll do that. Okay. Bruce, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and members of the public. For the record, my name is Bruce Scammon. I hear from Emmanuel Engineering and James Varon Associates. We're here representing Blind Tiger, who is proposing to raise the existing Exeter Country Club restaurant and replace it with a new restaurant and clubhouse. This is going to be the 1889 House, is what they're proposing. For those of you that may not know where the Exeter Country Club is, it's on JD Hill Road and Exeter. We're up near the end, and here we intersect with Webster. We've made several presentations to the board and to the town and to the public, and we listened to the members, the abutters, at the last meeting, and we took this last month to try to improve the plan in terms of what the neighbors have asked us that are, for the most part, above and beyond the town requirements. I'm going to slide this over just a little bit. The neighbors to the south is Hayes Trailer Park had asked us to take some of the trees that we had proposed at the last meeting and move them along the berm at the far side, on the south side, to try to get more protection there. We've also added a section of fence that's approximately 300 feet, just short of that. It's going to run from approximately the property line or the edge of this parking lot. We're going to run it all the way up past the close point of the parking lot, and then all the way to the end of this pond. And that's what we had discussed, a six-foot polyvinyl fence that would be tan, as I believe is what they agreed to at the meeting. So we have proposed that and put that on the plan. And that was the two things that were the major concerns to the abutters, to the south, that we addressed. To the abutters that, well, the abutters or non-abutters down Webster that deal with the drainage issues, we have gone back and forth, we talked about taking this island here and putting it into rock. But my concern was is that with erosion, that some of that might, over time, not work as well. So what I proposed is to put... Sure. That's why I moved here versus there facing the board. Trying to make it... So what we proposed is to start curving here, and we're running it all the way around here, so that all the water that comes down off this parking lot will be caught by the curb. And because the town didn't want the structures on the, in the town right of way, we're catching everything we can right at the edge of our property line. We put in a large culvert there, a large catch basin there with a double grate that has a fast curved entrance on the catch basin top, so that the water will go in faster. And we put those in line, so as the water comes down, it's going to run along that curb. And we put them too deep, so that they would be, if it gets by that first one. We heard the neighbors talk about the speed of the water and the issues over there. So we wanted to make that extra protection. So there's four feet of inlet versus just the regular two-by-two catch basin top. So that is right here at the property line. Additionally, we went back and decided to cut the pavement back and angle that, so that there's going to be a gutter line that comes in about 10 feet down the curb, so that it's not running along the edge of the pavement and have the chance to come out and run through the woods to get to the Webster or the catch basin out here, and it's on the town, and keep it within the pavement to get to the curving. With that, our drainage calculations, we have, from existing conditions to proposed conditions, we've reduced the flow even further. It's approximately, on the smallest storm event, it's a 50% reduction, but most of them are 66% to 65% reduction in flow from what happens today. So before, we were around 45%, 50%, so we've been able to pick up even more of that flow. So we, the town regulations say that you only need to go equal to what it is today. And there was some discussion about pavement and whether it was paved with a permit. And what we've done is made it so that by doing this, the gravel parking lots that were there prior to being paved were still having a reduction from what was there previously. So we've taken extra effort, we've heard the abutters, we understand that there is a serious issue, and we're doing everything that we can on our site to fix that issue. The town has been great to work with, and since our sitewalk and the review agent was also on the sitewalk, for those that weren't on there, and we've worked with them to try to make this even a better improvement. So with that said, I think, oh, one of the questions was about the cherry tree. I think that we talked about whether the cherry trees, we changed them to sugar maples, or a acceptable by the towns, local species of tree. And I know that we talked about sugar maples with some of the abutters. That's what we put, or equals, you know, was a local acceptable tree. I think that's everything I have.
Bruce, just because we, I'm sure we have some different public here. Could you also explain the drainage system?
Sure, overall.
The lower lot on the, is it 600?
Absolutely.
Because, you know, because that's part of that whole system.
Correct.
Yep.
So what we've done, these are the contours, the dark lines on here. The water runs perpendicular to contours. So waters from this whole new area of pavement up top runs like this. And we're catching it with these curbs here to get it into our pond at the top of the hill. This pond, there was some discussion to our neighbors to the south, they were concerned with the water going, staying in it and infiltrating and going out through the slope. I brought it to their attention that we have the whole thing underdrained, so that the water will slowly release. That slow release makes it so that the water doesn't come rushing down the hill to the neighbors. With a slow release, it's going to come down, go through the pipe, go down the swell. This existing parking lot is going to come down. We have this area to collect water, this area to collect water, and we've already talked about this upper area that's collecting the northernmost parking lot on the site. So with all this collection between these catch basins, we are taking the water between these, and then we're running it out to the pond on site. So what we've done is we've increased the water that goes onto the site, which then can be used for irrigation. Right now, the Country Club pumps with its wells 24 hours a day, is my understanding, into the pond to keep the pond high, so that they have water to irrigate with. So what we're doing is taking storm water and introducing it into the pond to reduce that, you know, the requirement of pumping water out of the ground. So we're trying to reuse that water and, in turn, save the plight of Webster Road, Webster Ave., I'm sorry, of the water issues that have been there for years. So we're taking that water down to the large pond that's on the ninth fairway. Additionally, water coming off the roof, we have a stone basin and under the deck that's going to be proposed, that the water from there will go into that. There is a stone basin on this side that is piped into the pond, so that water is not just sheeting off the roof and going down the driveway as it does to some degree today. So we're collecting all that water also. And this is approximately in the same location. It might be slightly moved forward to the north or towards the greens. The other thing that we did talk about at the last meeting was the traffic. And some of the neighbors were very concerned about traffic, and rightly so. And so what we're doing is we've narrowed this, this island actually is narrowed also. I can pull out the existing conditions, but this island, which I don't think we talked about at the last meeting, is being stretched in this direction, so we're making it a larger island, cutting back there. We're adding this new island in the middle, and we're adding a whole island here. Right now, that, this whole end you can just drive off of, and we're removing pavement to make that parking lot corner come further onto the property. So by doing that, and adding stop signs and stop lines, we are attempting to slow the flow down, make it so that it's an enforceable situation, having stop signs, so that the police can then enforce that if there is an issue, and trying to protect the neighbors, all of you and your other neighbors, from further issues with traffic flow. Does that do some of the... Additionally, we have a letter or email from, as Mr. Sharpall said, from Allison Reese, from Underwood, who has reviewed this multiple times, including the last end, and said that the drainage has improved. And, oh, I forgot one more thing, is we've also increased the pipe diameter from this last catch basin to the pond, so that we can even flow additional water if there is more water that comes to us. So we took that and increased it by, we took it from a 12-inch to a 15-inch, which with pi r squared is more than just a little increase. We do have some waivers. Do you want me to go through any waivers or not at this time?
Unless there's any other questions on the change of service?
Okay.
And Don?
Bruce, on the, I'm going to get this to where, this catch basin, the one you proposed initially, stays, but you made it a little bigger. Is that what I heard?
We made a new catch basin.
Well, I know you made a new catch basin.
This...
That stays basically what you showed us last time?
Well, yes, but we increased it from the previous time and put more stone in there, so that more water could come in. And additionally, we broke the curb, so water coming down the road would also come into our system and go onto the Country Club site versus the way it was originally worked out with the town. That water was going to stay in the road, and we're taking it in onto our site.
And the new catch basin here, although it's not on the plan?
Yeah, it's right there. It's a little, little double square. It's a rectangle.
Little rectangle, is it?
And that, that's going to catch everything on that part, not everything, but a good percent of it on that end?
Correct.
Closest to the building and all the way down.
The area that, in our drainage gougs, was from off of the pavement, we couldn't collect. We're not, we're not doing anything there, and it's in the grass area.
And we have a 12-inch pipe from the, between the two, and then it goes up to 15 inches.
Correct. So that, that way, we're not limited by that 12-inch pipe.
The pond on the south end of the property seems a little small.
Which...
That, yeah. And maybe it's made in the...
It reduces the flow dramatically from what's there today.
But that's all been calculated?
It has, and reviewed by the town.
And it does, it does eventually drain down to the, hit the other way?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any questions, Pete?
I'm going to wait to hear.
Okay.
Almost there right now.
Okay.
I have questions, but I'll wait until the public speaks.
Okay. All right, let me open to the public. Anybody in the public, we need to have you be using microphone somehow. And so maybe, can you just turn another quarter of a turn, so they can get in and out easily?
This?
Yeah, just like that, it's fine. So I'd ask you to step to the microphone, please, and introduce yourself, so that we know who's speaking, and also those that are at home enjoying the show. And our technician will get this all set up for us here.
Can I just put it back in the center, or do you want it for here?
Sure.
In the center, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can put it back in the center.
That'll make it easier. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So would anybody like to speak? If so, please step up and introduce yourself. Don't be shy. We love the public.
Come on now, we moved the podium.
There we go, good. You don't have to be a public speaker.
Thank you, Chair, everyone on the board, thanks for coming. Mary Ann Simmons just moved to Exeter, and I live at 103 Hayes Park, and unfortunately, I haven't been to any other meeting. So I'm curious about the access road to the Country Club. It's just the JD Hill? All the traffic to the Country Club will go up and down JD Hill Road? Am I correct in that?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so is that being addressed? That's a lot of traffic. I'd like, I don't know what's being done about that. There's no other way for anything. Everyone has to go up that road in order to get to the Country Club. So you're adding...
And restaurant, correct?
So that's 80 seats? So that's 80 seats?
Yes.
An 80-seat restaurant? And that's breakfast, lunch, and dinner?
I'm saying yes, Bruce, am I correct?
There's more than that. 127 seats.
Oh, 127 seats? That's breakfast, lunch, and dinner? So that's three times 127.
Well, maybe one busy restaurant if you packed breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Well, still, one has to still...
It'd be the busiest restaurant in Exeter.
I'm in the service industry. You prepare, you know? You have to be prepared that you could very well have 127 people for breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Well, that would be a...
But that's a lot of traffic. So then you have food trucks. That's 18 whalers delivering food. And your hours for this restaurant are, sir?
To be determined.
To be determined. We haven't determined the hours of the restaurant.
He should talk to you.
Correct, yeah. All righty.
Yes, speak to me and I'll ask the app.
Sorry. In my arrow there. I apologize, I didn't. So I'm just saying that's really a lot of traffic being added to a residential neighborhood where children play, they walk to each other's houses, they're out on their bikes. We're all out on our bikes, scooters. Everybody walks all day long. It's a very residential neighborhood. It's one of the reasons I moved there because it's residential. And understandably, there is a business there, absolutely. You know, golf to some people is their world. In my world, it's a four-letter word. It's just a golf joke. Everyone can laugh. But, you know, I understand that in the restaurant world, it's nonstop. So if you're serving breakfast, let's say 7:00 a.m., you've got help arriving early, you've got deliveries coming, then you're switching into lunch, you've got another set of staff, all of whom are accessing this road. Then you've got, again, food truck deliveries. These are large vehicles that lumber up and down a small street. It puts stress on the street. There really is no other way for it to be accessed. I'm assuming, I'm new to the neighborhood, so I don't know if you can get from the other side. No, okay, so that's not an option. So the only way in and out is J.D. Hill. That's it. I'm just saying it's a lot of stress on the roads. It's a residential neighborhood. It's going to add a lot of noise, pollution, air pollution from cars. Personally, I don't want more stop signs and a police officer sitting outside my house pulling people over. Doesn't sound like a nice thing to be sitting out in my yard hearing "Eeeehhh," you know? I'm just saying. I, I don't appreciate it. My vote is no, if I get to have a vote. So anyway, thanks for listening to my rant, everybody, and, you know, good luck, Bruce.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You want to respond with that or we can, let's, let's hear the other comments?
I want to hear comments and then I'm happy to address them all again.
Yes, yeah, let's do that, yeah. Here we are, gentleman's going to speak, Phil, thank you.
Good evening, Board. Corey Stevens. I live at the lower end of J.D. Hill 35. I'm also an employee of the town. My comments tonight are purely as a resident and neighbor to all these folks here. I guess I would dovetail on what Marion said in a way. My biggest concern is traffic on J.D. Hill. I don't necessarily hold the developer entirely responsible for what goes on in J.D. Hill. J.D. Hill is a cut-through neighborhood. Whether you're going from Portsmouth Ave. into town, try to avoid going all the way to the end of Portsmouth Ave. and then down High Street, or you're trying to get up to the golf course, you've got to go the entire length of J.D. Hill to get where you're going. J.D. Hill and all of the major conduits are wide roads and they mostly have straightaways. And that lends itself, in my experience, to traffic speeding through the neighborhood and not always paying attention to the traffic signs. So, well, as long as the drainage and the, the access into the property is addressed, I don't have a problem with the project overall. I have a problem with the town allowing a project without considering the impact on those of us downstream, so to speak. I think in the planning process, and I don't come to a lot of planning board meetings, so maybe you do take this into consideration, but I think if we're going to plan a project or allow a commercial project in a residential neighborhood or any cut-through of neighborhood, and I know in prior years we've had other issues in other parts of town, we need to deal and address with traffic coming issues. I'm not asking to spend a lot of money, but I think we could do some strategic, maybe some three-season speed bumps. They're being proposed just this week in the Portsmouth Herald up in Portsmouth and different neighborhoods, and I don't see why we couldn't do that here. And I don't lay all this at the feet of the golf course, but, I mean, one of the stated goals is to increase traffic volume up to the golf course to make this a successful project. And I think that this board, along with whatever department or other boards, if that can be talked about and maybe a solution come up with, and maybe I'm speaking for myself and nobody else wants to see speed bumps on our road, but I think that could be a nice way to mitigate the speeding we see through the neighborhood. And I've been there for over 20 years now and it's only grown. I know when the Chestnut Street Apartments came in, developer invited us in as a neighborhood and asked us what we can do or they can do to, you know, improve the quality without, you know, sort of to mitigate the detriment that the apartments were going to cause. And it ended up with a four-way stop sign at the end of J.D. Hill. So maybe there's some partnering we can do here, maybe not, but I just feel like, not just my neighborhood, any neighborhood that's a cut-through or people aren't coming here as a destination, they're on their way someplace else, it lends itself to speed. And as Marion said, there's kids that don't play on our road because you really can't. But those of us that just live there would like to see things slow down and I think some seasonal speed bumps would be a great way to do that, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dave, how can we get our speaker at home on Zoom?
Yeah, she has her hand up, so you just acknowledge her and they will take, the IT folks will take care of it. And unmute her and she can speak.
To, uh...
Her or anyone?
Doreen Chester.
Here we are.
Her hand's up, so she's, it looks like she's ready. She just needs to be unmuted.
You have to do it on here?
I'm muted here.
I don't think you do it.
He doesn't do it?
Okay.
Or do they do it back there?
Well, they, that's what they told me today. I asked that very question and they said they would, they would just raise the hand, they would unmute. But if you have a unmute button and you can push it, try it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, she's muted on her side.
Back to this issue. I think John did that one.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, well, good evening, Chairman, Plumber, members of the planning board and the public. And Dave, my name is Doreen Chester and I live at 3 Webster Ave. I just want to thank Chairman Plumber for allowing me to speak this evening for this very important meeting. I'd be there if I was not fit. I own a home on Webster Ave. that belongs to my husband, Sharon Chester, and we are in the face of the streets of the Exeter Country Club. I do have major concerns about this project. The application to the proposed project that the Exeter Country Club has described as an improvement and an expansion of an existing country club and parking lot. However, I don't think it's that simple. When you go beyond the face of the application and review the drawings and listen to the meetings, the project is much more than improvement and expansion. Actually, it is a change in use. The proposed 6,392-square-foot, two-floor building with 127 seats, bar, restaurant, virtual golf dwarfs the original footprint of the current 3,000-square-foot clubhouse with, and I will say this, incidental grill. The clubhouse there, on their website, the Exeter Country Club describes this grill as a place for sandwiches to go for their members and guests. I would hardly call that an existing restaurant. According to Vision Appraisal on the town's website, the Exeter Country Club is currently zoned in an R3 district. And for the benefit of those other than the board, because I know you're familiar, but this district is defined in the Ordinance 4-2 as detached, single-family homes, schools, and recreational facilities, which is the current fit of the current country club where it stands. R3 does not include restaurants, which are in the definition of retail establishments permitted in commercial zones C1, C2, and C3 districts of the town. We are none of those. The proposed project does not fit within the guidelines or the spirit of the zoning article 4-2 that describes this area as detached, single-family dwellings. The purpose of the Exeter Country Club's existence today meets the criteria for R3. As per Exeter Country Club's filing of their 2020 nonprofit report, their business purpose is stated as, and I quote, "promotion of outdoor games and exercise and to provide grounds and instrumentalities to that end." There is nothing mentioned about a retail restaurant or business. This project should be deemed as non-conforming use of the existing Exeter Country Club property. In closing, permitting a restaurant project of this size would negatively impact drainage, which it sounds like may have been addressed but still needs to be addressed by the town. 127-seat restaurant and bar running seven days a week, year-round, create truck traffic, more vehicle traffic, excessive noise, lighting, and create more opportunities for automobile accidents in our densely populated neighborhood with narrow and dead-end streets and plenty of children playing. By allowing this project to be approved as-is would be like trying to force a square peg into a round hole. It's simply not a good fit and not zoned for this little R3 district. I respectfully request the planning board to please consider sending this case to the zoning board before any decisions are made on the viability of this project. Thank you for your time and letting me attend this meeting.
Thank you, Doreen. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, please. Step to the microphone, thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Rogers, one of the principals of Hayes Mobile Home Park, Inc. And I've heard what, what Corey had to say about the traffic, and I'd like to just add that it's not just J.D. Hill Avenue, which has really become an airport runway for speeders, but also the side streets like Bittersweet Lane, Clover Drive, Haven Lane, there, or Fairway Drive, they're all having to deal with the traffic that comes off Portsmouth Avenue and to cut through so that they can get into town faster. So that's where the trucks, the food trucks will come and the most of the customers. And I've talked to a lot of people over the weekend and they're not happy about the really heavily increased traffic that there will be on those streets. So I, I'm not sure why the restaurant has to be so big. I think I heard that if that's built, it'll be the largest restaurant in Exeter. It's a lot of people in a very densely populated area. There are many, many houses and it's no outlet. So you go in and you come out. It's, it's going to be troubling. We're all very upset about it and everybody blasts through those cross, those intersections. So I'm not sure how you deal with something like that because that's like the world the way it is. But J.D. Hill Avenue bends in the middle, there's no visibility, kids come up the middle of the street on their bikes. It's, there are some very hazardous situations there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure. How you do? I'm Charles Hayes. That's my society, I just talked. We do have a lot of traffic on it. We've got new people up in the neighborhood that've got a lot of kids and they ride the bikes in the streets. Now, a lot of the people from Exeter play golf up there probably know the speed limit, probably knows the stop time. You get a lot of people from out of state, Massachusetts and surrounding area, come up that hill lickety-split and they don't care like they're late getting there for a golf game, okay? We shut down, if you go by our park, you'll find one of our roads completely shut right down. That was approached from the town, Slickman and the town of Exeter, they, and the police department asked to shut that road down. Why? We had two side swipes coming from down the country club hill and almost killed two people. And that was quite a long time ago, so we approached and shut that road down. That just tells you, you could tell everybody in the world, you have stop signs. And the police department a few years ago did a research on the neighborhood. They found like almost 70, 80% of the people, they stopped, they ran through stop signs, lived right on J.D. Hill. That's hard to believe, but that's what happened, okay? And you do have a lot of traffic. I mean, you've got people probably that are going to be good people, but you're going to have people always that aren't care, they just don't care. And, and we have people come through our park because there used to be a sign sitting down by Mr. Scapiti's house saying that there was a country club, Exeter Country Club's pointing up the road. Well, no, the sign's not there anymore. So they come through our park and you're going to have more people come through our park because you're going to have, they're not going to know where the country club is, they're not going to know where the restaurant is. Either they're just going for the restaurant, they don't care about the club, they're not going to know where to go. And we have a speed limit out there. We've got people, kids, old people, when they're backing out of the yard, animals, you know, you've got that problem that we have to face too. I mean, it's, it's too much of a burden. I mean, we're not getting any hunger, we aren't, and you know what I mean? And my boy will be taken over the park and this is something he'll have to face down the road unless something has been resolved in this problem either through stop signs or, I don't think the police are going to keep going up and down the hill and trying to help everybody out. They get their own problems. You know what I mean? I mean, that's, but we do have a lot of traffic problems and that's the reason why that road is shut down, just because the people don't care. We yell at them and they'll just look at you and tell you where to go and just do what they want to do. But I'm scared of the kids because just the other day when we were up there last couple weeks ago looking at the property lines and talking to the engineer, we've got a bunch of little girls going down the hill on little bikes with helmets, up and down J.D. Hill. I don't see any blind signs there, I don't see any slow signs there. Be careful of children in the, in the roads, I don't see those there at all. So who's going to come up from Massachusetts or out of state or even, some people don't play golf, how are they going to go up and down the road and know that this kid's there unless something comes out of the yard? There's got to be some kind of control there. If you're going to ignore us as neighborhoods, you've got to have something that controls that problem because you're not going to, people even come from the country club, they're not going to read those signs. They're going to look at and say, oh, stop, okay, goodbye, stop, boom, gone. That's it. That's what's going to happen. So I mean, I just want to bring that to your attention too. And I'd like to ask the engineer too also, if I could please, is that, can I do that? On the, on what he's doing for here? The water drains you're going to have on this property here, how is the road going to, how is it going to be paved? And, and how's it going to be, is it going to be paved so that water comes into that trench, that, that pond you got built?
Which?
The pond you have right here?
This one up here?
Yes. So how are you going to have the paving on that done? Is it going to go into that?
This whole area goes in this direction.
What's going to happen to the lower part? Is that going to be paved the same way?
This?
Yeah, is that going to be paved straight out? Is that going to go towards the bank in two?
This is not proposed to be touched except for the very, very top of it. This stays just the way it is. We're collecting it here, here, and for this parking lot.
See, I want, how big's the pipe in the ground you're going to have?
15-inch.
How much? You went to a 15-inch now? Are you sure that's going to take the water? Because I'm just saying that we have a lot of water comes through, sips through. When they worked on the park a lot years ago, we had, our increase of water had started coming through the hills. And we were trying to address that by putting drainage of our own in and running out to the back field. And that's where we take a lot of the water from Exeter Country Club too. And we just want to know if that's going to handle that water. We don't need any water overflowing going into our bank and into the park and through the rocks because you've got fesers all through there. So I'm just, I just brought that up anyway. And, okay, and your lights too? Your lights, you've got a height on your lights? Your lights, you got a height on your lights? Do you know what you're gonna do for lights for height-wise? I mean, that's the reason why you're putting up the fences it is. That's one reason why we worked with the trees we could to try to keep them there, because it protects us from the lights too. Especially we have LED lights, and you know they're twice as powerful.
We discussed lights in sidewalk.
Twenty feet.
And at that point.
Twenty feet high?
They said twenty feet.
Okay, all right.
Reduce the number.
The wall mounted's are at 12.
We did reduce the number of lights that were first proposed.
No drawn automatic dimmers too. Okay, I just, well, thank you very much, that's all.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Charles Hayes, too myself, part of the park. My only concern too is also, just like these people with the traffic, the traffic is only there for how many months a year? Because this place is only open for X amount of years, and now it's gonna be open 365 days a year. So now you're gonna have a constantly traffic that's up there, going back and forth. And the drainage part, I can understand that, but what happens in the wintertime? When everything gets clogged up, all the winters nowadays, they all rain. You're gonna have all that storm drain, all that water coming down. Those storm drains get clogged. Where's all this water gonna go for that, for the people who Webster Avenue? You know, you gotta think of that situation. Also, we were, I mean, all the golf balls, over the years, we've had them all through the Mobile Home Park. They get shot over, you know? They're taking all these trees down. I mean, it'll pretty much be very visible to our park now. There'll be very little going through there. And, you know, I just don't understand why this has to be on a subject, on a back road like this. I mean, you've got Portsmouth Avenue, you've got many main streets, you can put all these restaurants on, and you're gonna put a restaurant in a back street like this? That's my biggest concern.
Thank you.
Hi there, thanks for allowing me to speak today, and thank you for your time. And everyone that spoke had very legitimate points. I'm Justin Jumper.
Thank you.
I am one of the owners of the Blind Tiger Group, who are proposing to build this project for the town of Exeter and the community. I think we said this maybe about a month ago when we were here, but our goal is to be outstanding neighbors. Okay, I think everybody here brings up legitimate points. The seven owners of this company have, I think, 11 or 12 kids combined, okay? So we care greatly about the safety of the children in the neighborhood. We are very empathetic of the drainage situation, which is impacting your homes. And I think what you've seen from the team in what we've done over the past 30 days is address above and beyond what the town has ever asked us for, right, or requires, bringing down drainage 65% based on the new design, curbs and signs to slow down traffic. Without question, speeding is a concern in that neighborhood. I've seen it myself, I've witnessed it. People come plowing out of that parking lot, but we're addressing a lot of that with what we're doing with the design of the parking lot. Certainly encourage local law enforcement to be able to come on and patrol that area and bring down, and, you know, citation folks that are not obeying the law. I think with regard to what Doreen had to say, I think, you know, she was very thorough and very articulate, and I appreciate her comments. I just think that it's really important for the town and everyone in the community to understand that this is a existing clubhouse with a restaurant. Okay, if you walk into this clubhouse and you walk upstairs, there is a full-service kitchen that is up there. Well, it's not used anymore, it used to be. When I first joined the golf club 12 years ago, we would go in there, my wife and I and the kids, on a Friday night, and we'd have a full-service sit-down meal. Okay, while that was not necessarily profitable for the Exeter Country Club anymore, they still serve breakfast, they still serve lunch, they still serve dinner, they have a liquor license, and they serve alcohol. This is by all accounts a full-service restaurant. Okay? This is, you know, this is, this is a rebuilding of the clubhouse. Okay, the experience that you have when you walk in that clubhouse right now is not the best. Okay, our proposal is building a brand-new, beautiful building for the community. It's gonna bring a beautiful new restaurant to the community, there's gonna be indoor golf in there, there's gonna be a new pro shop for the head pro, there's gonna be new locker rooms for the members and the guests. This is a beautiful project for the town, okay? Regarding the, listen, there's a lot of traffic. Okay, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cars that come up there every day right now. There's a golf course, that's not going away, right? The golf is not going away. If you go up there this Sunday, there's a tournament, there's gonna be 100 cars up there. If you go up there Friday night, there's two groups of people, there's 50, 60, 70 players up there. There's leagues Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It's a very busy road already with what's there now. Is there gonna be a small increase in traffic? Probably because of, right, because of the restaurant, we think it's gonna be successful, so we think there'll be an increase in cars. But we wanna do everything in our power to make sure that that traffic is addressed. I'm very, very, very empathetic of your situation, I really am. And I'd love to partner in any way, shape, or form to address it. So if there's anything else anybody wants me to address, I'm happy to do that right now.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Could you step to the microphone, please, so we can hear you? Thank you, sir.
As I said, I wasn't here prior, so I'm just curious, is the restaurant and the golf course public or private?
Public.
It's all public, so, okay, all right, I just didn't know. So the restaurant is a public restaurant?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, sorry.
I think it has been since, it hasn't been around that long, but I think it's always been a public club.
It's always been a public club.
Yeah. Sir.
Paul Scafidi, J.D. Hill Ave., 26. I have a dual reason to be here. I live on J.D. Hill, and I'm also a member of the golf course. I also live at the entrance to the Hayes's Trailer Park, so I kinda know where everything is. I've been involved with the club for years. We need this golf course to improve. We've been there 133 or 34 years. So it's not like we're this new person on the block. We were there before Webster Ave., anybody up and down the hill. Hayes's may have been there before us, but the golf course has been there for 134 years. So this isn't anything new. I was president of the club for nine years. We had a full restaurant for just about 30 years, until it just became, during the COVID and all that stuff and things, it wasn't viable, so we shut down the big. We used to be open in the wintertime, we used to have the Exeter Rotary Club up there every Monday morning. This was a building that had the largest function room in Exeter until the new things came in. Our function room upstairs is the larger, was the largest function room in Exeter. There wasn't one. So people would come to us. We've had weddings, we've had funerals up there, we've had everything in between up there. So this isn't something new that the neighborhood hasn't seen before. The woman's talking about trucks coming in and out. They're already there. We get deliveries every day. Two or three trucks come up there every day for our liquor, for our food, UPS, FedEx. This isn't something new. What we're trying to do is give Exeter a new clubhouse for a golf course that's the fifth oldest in New England, the oldest in New Hampshire, and the 25th oldest in the United States, believe it or not. People don't know this. 1889 is when they first get up there. So it's not this little bit of, we're trying to take something and explode it. I appreciate Hayes's Trailer Park's problems, issues, but I'll tell you, if you sit on my front porch and watch the people drive through the stop signs, including coming out of Hayes's Trailer Park without stopping, it's brutal. You have to be careful. I saw a woman crossing the street on Chestnut Street two weeks ago. Woman came down the hill. She wasn't a golfer. She lived up there or was coming from Portsmouth Ave., that close to hitting her, because she was on her phone, drove through the stop sign, and this woman's in the walkway. And the woman had her hand out like she was gonna stop the car from hitting her. She's probably 80, 82 years old, and the woman rolled down the window and said, I didn't see you. She was in the crosswalk. So the problem of speed and traffic up there, yeah, it's viable, I appreciate that, I really do. But nobody stops. You watch the people come out of the mill. They don't stop at the stop sign. Hayes's Trailer Park, I can tell you five or six cars every day, right through the stop sign, coming down J.D. Hill. They're not all golfers. They're people that live up there, that come through Portsmouth Ave. I appreciate it, it's a cut-through. I understand that. I watch it all the time. But with this, it's nothing new. We're just trying to put a new building that's expanding our capability to offer a better golf experience to the golfer. We're semi-private, that means we have members, and we allow the public. We allow the public to come up and use the restaurant, no problem. That's the way it's supposed to be. This will enhance the golf experience that's been there for 134 years. So to bring up all this thing about the traffic and everything, I can tell you right now, we don't have 150 people that just blast up to the golf course every day. Honest to God, we wish we did. We'd be doing a lot better than we have been. We're doing fine now because golf has expanded. But this is the clubhouse that the club really, really needs, and Exeter can use it. You don't have to be a member, you don't have to isolate yourself. You can go up there and enjoy the golf as well as anybody else, whether you're a member or not. We used to have 340 members. We only have 240 now. So during the '90s, there was, that parking lot was full every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Nobody complained. There wasn't any complaint about it. The restaurant was open. We used to go up there every Sunday morning for breakfast, my wife and I, because it was a great breakfast for $3.50. Same thing, when the mill came in, there wasn't a big screaming about how much traffic was gonna be. Both sides of the Chestnut Street is full of traffic. And you watch the people come out of the mill parking lot, drive right through the stop sign, go up J.D. Hill, go over to Bittersweet, and go over to Portsmouth Ave., fine, they don't stop. I have, if I put a camera on my door and the police would take my video, they, at $125 a ticket, they could do two grand a day without batting an eye. And that'd be a lot of money for the town, but that's what happens. That's what people do. And they come in and out of the trailer park, they go up and down to the golf course. I'm not saying the golf course is perfect. It definitely is not. But we also allow sledding going up there all winter long, and they damage our course, but we still allow it because we told the town we would allow it. That's part of our agreement with the town, that it'd be open for recreational purposes. All that stuff all fits into one big envelope. We know there's traffic problems on J.D. Hill, we know the golf course needs a new clubhouse. This is a good way to make this all work. The drainage and everything else can be worked out. Let this go forward because it's something both the town, the neighborhood, and the golf course could really use. Thanks.
Thank you.
I think Paul makes good points and far more articulate than myself, but I think he makes everyone's point that when we're planning these neighborhoods, as I'm saying, these projects in these neighborhoods, we need to include dealing with the problems that exist, including the traffic. So it's fine to say it's been in existence, but let's deal with it. It's not going away. You know, by design, they're gonna increase their volume. We need to deal with the traffic, not just my neighborhood, across town as well.
Thank you.
It's part of the planning process.
Yeah, yep. Anyone else?
I think we did talk about traffic when the mill was done, too.
We did somewhat.
A little bit, as I recall.
Hands up on the screen again.
Just one question, the existing restaurant that closed the last two or three years, how many seats is that?
We had about 60.
60, so we're doubling it?
Oh, yeah, you definitely, the new clubhouse, yeah.
Okay.
Virtual hands up.
Virtual hand is up, okay?
Good evening again. This is Doreen Chester from Three Webster Ave. I just feel the need to comment about Paul Scafidi's commentary. He's asking for all the other neighbors to just accept this new restaurant because they need it for the golf course. I personally don't play golf. My husband does not play golf. I'm sure there are many residents who don't play golf in this area. So this does not benefit me in any way, shape, or form. It basically spoils the quiet enjoyment that I currently have without a huge restaurant creating, I guess I'll say, double the traffic. So I don't know why they selected this area. Other country clubs assess their members, and the membership pays for any improvements. Why that wasn't done, I have no idea. But if I wanted to live near a restaurant, I would have bought a home on Portsmouth Avenue or downtown Exeter. There's no excuse for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen.
Can I just make a comment? I think, Dave, I would assume that code enforcement reviewed this and said it's really not a change of use, it's a expansion of an existing nonconforming use, correct?
Well, the first part, yes, he reviewed it. I think expansion of a nonconforming use could require a variance. I don't think he made that determination. What I can tell you is, the zoning officer, the building inspector, who, you know, interprets the zoning ordinance, said that this doesn't need any type of zoning board relief, whether it be a special exception or a variance. So it's specifics that you're saying. I don't exactly know what he, you know, what he deemed it as, but he didn't say it was a change of use requiring any type of zoning board relief. And the avenue for that, if someone disagrees with that opinion, is an appeal of an administrative decision that goes to the ZBA, and the ZBA, you know, looks at the ordinance and either upholds the, you know, the municipal official's determination or reverses it.
Right. Thank you.
Good question.
Let's see, who else wants to speak?
More questions.
For those of you who live on J.D. Hill, how, that's an accepted town street, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's, is, I'm trying to think of, is there a possibility of reconfiguring J.D. Hill Road itself to somehow address what is troubling the residents? And I don't know that answer, because I'm not a traffic engineer, I'm not any kind of an engineer at all. But nonetheless, we had a case several years ago where we had the same kind of an issue. There was to be a lot of traffic going through an old neighborhood. And one of the things that we focused on, on the board there, was what can be done with respect to the existing roadway to both, and I see the gentleman shaking his head, which you're probably right.
I don't see anything.
Well, okay. I'm just, I'm just raising.
I live at the bottom of the hill.
Can you speak in the mic?
Microphone, please. Sir, and thank you.
Sorry. Sorry. Paul Scafidi, J.D. Hill. I live at the bottom of the hill, so I'm as far down as the bottom of J.D. Hill. If you keep going further, you end up in the Civil ago. So you just go straight up the hill. I don't see unless Mr. Hayes or the Hayes family wants to give some land to help it work, and I don't think that's gonna happen.
Hope springs eternal.
Yeah, well, I don't think the people on the right-hand side, of which Cory's one of them, is gonna give that. So I think J.D. Hill Ave. is J.D. Hill Ave., and there's not much you can do about it.
Yeah.
You know, I think you're stuck between a rock and a hard place when it comes to the road.
Well, I, this was just to try to explore.
No, I appreciate that. And there's a, there's a four-way stop sign that's ignored. There's a stop sign up in, what's it, Bittersweet now, what's it called? Fairway Drive, Fairway Drive. They ignore that. We understand that. We know people coming out of the parking lot. And just like, you know, I have no interest financially in any of this, other than I'm a member with the golf course, so I'm not part of Blind Tiger or anything like that. We know that people don't start coming out of the parking lot the way they should. We understand that. That's what we're trying, that's what they're trying to do with this, to make this work that way. And we understand that. So, and my kids grew up on J.D. Hill, and yep, it was tough traffic, but when I lived there, it was a mill. In the mill, you think it was bad. Now, you should have seen the mill at 3:30, when everybody get out of work. J.D. Hill Ave. was just a parking lot because everybody was trying to get out. So you look at improvements, and what improvement's doing for the neighborhood? This isn't doing anything to the neighborhood, because the golf club is at the end of the neighborhood. We can't go anywhere. We're stuck. We would love to be an 18-hole golf course, but not there. If they would have done it in the '40s, there wouldn't be a Webster Ave. or anyplace over there, because that would have been part of the golf course. So Exeter's stuck with this golf course, and it's a great little golf course, and people are finding it again, so it's being used again. And that's what we all hope for.[1779.75]
Just one question. For those of you who live in the area, it, it sounds like there's already safety issues, right? Concerns, okay. And has anyone talked to anyone with the police department? Have they done anything? Is there any plans that, well?
Cory.
We used to, we used to have an officer on a bicycle. He would go under the trees on J.D. Hill on Chestnut Street, and you couldn't see him. And within five minutes, he'd have five cars pulled over. Then he'd go up J.D. Hill by the telephone pole, park his bike there, people whip around the corner. He'd have more people pulled over there. They used my driveway, which I told them they can use. They catch people all the time. They don't have enough police officers to do it.
I was talking about the signage, speed tables.
It's got a four-way stop sign now.
Okay, but any along the way, you know, drive slow children, that type of?
Oh, there's, I think there's one at the top of the hill, right? Yeah. That's all there. People, people just ignore it.
Just asking the question.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Trust it. We'd love to see everybody stop, but they don't.
Yeah, I know. And it's not unique to your neighborhood. It's every.
Absolutely. And when they go through the stop sign, they're not doing five miles an hour.
To the question of what can be done on J.D. Hill, I think, you know, anything significant would be baked into our master plan, if you're going to do real traffic calming, to narrow the road and get people to slow down. You know, I, I'm sorry we're using this forum. You know, your, your application to air these grievances, for lack of a better word, but, you know, we're talking about the marginal increase in traffic. It's not, you know, they're not going to break the bank here. But this has been going on. And there are things that can be done. We can do speed bumps. You will slow people down. We will never get rid of the tractor trailers or whoever's going to deliver food and alcohol up there. It's just not going to happen. And then personally, that's fine for me. But what we can do, and I think for fairly short money, is on a three-season basis, slow the traffic down. They may never stop at stop signs, but they will slow down if they bottom out and blow an exhaust system out of their car, muffler or whatever. It can be done, and it doesn't have to break the bank. The police will always come, and they'll put up their speed board, and they will come and, you know, citation people for blowing out the stop sign. But they can't do that 24/7. And it's not, wouldn't be fair to ask them to do that. But they will respond if we ask them. So, but I think we can do things for short dollars.
Cory, I was going to ask you a question. You mentioned Portsmouth on that. Was it Banfield?
Aldridge.
Aldridge. Interesting.
Yeah. And just, just the other day.
Because they have them on Banfield, too.
They do.
They did a lot of expansion.
Those are cables.
Yeah, it works.
I mean.
And Banfield's as straight as it gets.
And I may be speaking out of turn, but I'm not sure the DPW wants to deal with plowing roads.
Correct.
Totally. I totally get that. But on the off-seasons, and when we have traffic up there, you know, why can't there be three or four places strategically placed?
I think, I think your point about this application maybe getting caught up in an existing issue, but that's usually when they come up. That's what happens. So.
It may or may not be fair to them, but.
It's part of the process, as you said.
I feel bad for the guy in Washington, or, you know, whatever went on. You know, they've got their issues, too. So we're just one of many. But we've got a forum, and we're going to use it, I guess.
Well, I think it's a, I think this is an important issue, on whether it's on the backs of this application, or if it's somebody that's had an issue on another part of town. Maybe the Rose Farm certainly dealt with this. That was a big project going into, and all funneling into an old neighborhood. But I think, I think at some point, I think we're going to have to come to the table and figure out some answers. We're, we're dealing with this all across the country. It's not just Exeter. And I think, you know, whether we narrow roads, which is becoming a trend in a lot of places, because it's, it's found that the narrower the road, the slower people drive, and they're more cautious, there are fewer accidents. There are a lot of, a lot of things we can do. And what we can do on this project, I'm not sure. But I think it's clearly a problem.
I'm bringing it forward, yes.
I, I, I just want to keep in people's mind that the bus comes up on J.D. Hill, right at the end of our park at 8 o'clock in the morning, picks up about half a dozen kids or not more, and they drop them up at 2:30, 3 o'clock. So there's always buses, there's always kids there to be picked up. I mean, I just hope nothing ever happens if somebody doesn't really realize. You know, they got, people still run buses. You know, they, there's something about their brain doesn't work properly, you know what I mean? But the fact is that you've got to, hopefully, nobody ever gets hurt of a kid crossing in front of a bus. I mean, I know the bus driver, and she's very reliable, but we do have kids that get picked up at the end of our park. They sit there for about a half hour before she, the bus picks them up, then drops them back off and gone in the, in the afternoon. But I just want to bring that up, too, because, so you always have kids in that neighborhood. And that has to be addressed if you're going to do something of this nature. I can, it's hard to do it. It's very hard to do it. And how are we going to do it? I don't know. But it's got to be addressed somehow. And this is a problem we even had before we even started this project.
Yes.
But it has to be addressed, because you're going to have people that don't live in this town, that really don't have a problem with reading signs because they're going to get through them. They don't, people don't read signs, period. I've seen that from my own factors. So I'm just saying that, I'm just bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't know how you.
I'd say it's a related situation.
Yeah.
Well, it's not as though we're not concerned with traffic. No, we have been concerned with traffic as long as.
Well, at the end of the day, we're the planning board.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate it and understand that. But I'm saying, it's not as though we haven't thought, maybe not all of these particular issues, but we have thought long and hard about what to do with traffic in general.
Yeah.
Not necessarily site-specific, but general movement of traffic through and around Exeter. We really have spent time on that. And I want you to understand that we're not, we don't close our eyes to issues like this. You may think we do, but we really don't. And it's important, because we live here, too.
No.
And we're concerned, as you are concerned. We don't come necessarily from, well, never mind that.
Okay, sir.
I promise this will be the last time. I just haven't asked them.
Columbo. You get a friend.
What's, what's the actionable item here, then? If you guys, you know, if you've thought about it, and clearly there's a traffic issue on J.D. Hill, and we're expressing it here, what's the actionable for the planning board? How do we address this? How do we not make this something that happens perhaps 10 or 15 years from now?
Well, I can feel that one.
And maybe this isn't the form, maybe you're not the board, but you guys can take that and make it happen.
I think my first answer is that it sounds like it's a master plan kind of issue or item. And.
Perhaps, for the long term, but I don't think it's asked.
It's not just your neighborhood.
Understood.
You guys are here to, because this project happens to be in your neighborhood. We were dealing with several cases, and we hear the same, and keep hearing it. So we try to work that into master plan.
But we're planning for a project.
Yeah, I can address that, Cory. So three members of this board in front of you tonight are part of the master plan oversight committee. We meet roughly once a month, keeping the master plan live. We work on action items. Our town planner has enlisted some outside counsel as well, and we're working on making sure the plan is still relevant and working on it all the time. So there are traffic calming projects going on all around town. You may have noticed some. I mean, I know people who come here and like them and don't like them. They're changed, right? So some people wouldn't like the speed bump, right?
I acknowledge.
I would, because I think it's safety first. But I can also understand, they're not fun to drive over all the time, either, right? So there's two sides to every coin. But we are working on the master plan, and part of that is making our community safe, making it walkable, and making its pedestrian safe is a real big driving force in the master plan, which is part of what you're talking about. I don't think what I'm hearing is there's a car accident on J.D. Hill Ave area every other day. It's really pedestrian safety is what I'm hearing, and what I've probably experienced myself in traveling that road many times. I've never seen an accident, thankfully.
I haven't either.
But I have seen speed, for sure. So I think your guys are not being inaccurate of what you're bringing forward. And I'm hearing that actually from both people that have a vested interest in the course, and people that are just maybe not even into golf and probably rather see the golf course not there.
Yeah.
But it has been there a long time. And I think you made a very valid point, that when you talk about statistically significant, the amount of traffic addition that this, in my opinion, that this brings to that neighborhood versus what's already there is statistically insignificant.
Probably won't even notice it.
That's the reality. It's something to talk about right now. It sounds like the end of the world. I honestly don't, I think you'll notice it the most during construction, just because it's construction-oriented traffic. But once that is up and running, if it's extremely successful, I don't think the traffic will be an issue. My question would be probably hours of operation.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard that, but that would be my question if I was a neighbor.
Yeah. I guess just to round it out. So if you can take to, you know, your group that meets real pretty regularly.
Yeah.
The idea of, why can't Exeter use season's vehicles like, like they're considering in our neighboring towns? And that would be great. And I know, you know, we can do things with master plan that are further out, and they cost more, and I completely appreciate that. But this may be something low.
Well, but the master plan part, we meet, and that isn't hiring people to go and redo the plan at all. That's us taking what's already been done and making it real.
Yeah.
Stuff like this actionable, because that's big to all of us. And it doesn't sit on a shelf and get forgotten about. You have an exciting meeting, people get up, yeah, let's do this, let's do that, nothing happens. That's really, I'm not too interested in that kind of operation. So we really do try to get to action, for sure, and appreciate that, because I think it's a great idea, personally. I think it has to be vetted through other parties, including the people that handle traffic control in the town and handle the roads. But I think it's a good idea to calm the traffic problem that is already there.
Hands up again?
Doreen, again, again.
Doreen, do you wish to speak again?
Yes, I do.
Please do.
Okay. I just want to mention that the current Exeter Country Club and Grill only operate about eight or nine months a year. So that would mean that this new restaurant will be operating, operating 12 months a year by itself. So what does that make this whole area? You know, I'm glad that other residents of this area have spoken, but I will say that the direct impact of this project would not affect them, because they're at the bottom of the hill. They won't have to suffer the noise, the lighting, or anything else. And I just want you to please keep us in mind on Webster Ave, dead-end street, by the way. I have no other egress to get out of my property. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen.
Please do, sir.
Justin Jumper again from the Blind Tiger Group. Yes, we will be open 12 months, but the traffic that you'll see in the winter will be far, far, far less than what is seen in the summer, because the golf course will be closed, if that makes sense. So yes, the restaurant will be open, but you're going to see a substantial reduction over the winter.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Is your intent to hold functions there?
We are not going to get, we're not in the wedding, we're not going to be doing weddings or large functions now.
No.
Maybe we do small, you know, Exeter Hospital wants to host a meeting for 15, 20 people. Yeah, we'll probably get into that, but nothing, nothing large.
Oh, really?
But you still don't have your hours of operation, which is a concern. It's a neighborhood.
Yeah, and I certainly understand that. I would argue that, you know, the president of the club is here today, and we're working on what we would call an operating agreement and services agreement, as we are leasing with the golf course. That has not been worked out yet. But I would argue we'd also be open when the golf course is open, to ensure that there is food and beverage.
I'm more concerned at night. How late you'd be open, that's unknown.
It's, it's unknown, but I think what you see from a business perspective, as we look at all of the restaurants around Exeter, you see most of them closing around the 9:00, 10:00 timeframe.
Yeah.
I wouldn't anticipate anything past that.
I did notice on your plans that you did put in the dimming for 10:00.
Yes.
For your lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did talk about larger venues.
Yeah.
Before, and so you're saying the same thing.
Yeah. I know, I had been active with Exeter Rotary for a number of years, and we did actually meet there. It was Monday afternoons for a while. And there's not a lot of function facilities locally, still. There's a few, but not, not a ton of options.
Well, Lions Club is up there for a while.
Were they?
Yep. A little tough on the hill.
Yeah, yeah. It's a good hill. It's good for the calves.
Okay. Anything else, Dave?
Just want to respond to John's question earlier about the lights.
Yeah.
Because we did do a sidewalk. On the previous plans, there was shown six pole lights. I mean, well, six of one kind, three of another. So nine 20-foot pole lights identified as S4 and S5 on the plan set. And the latest plan set still has nine, so I wouldn't mind asking the, the one you just gave me. So, because I thought at the sidewalk, it was going from nine to two or four, something.
Yeah, we did reduce it at the sidewalk.
Go to five.
They're supposed to go to five, yeah.
That's what I remember.
It's not shown on the lighting plan.
Correct. And that's the old lighting plan?
This is the one you just, this is the plan you just handed.
Correct. But it's the original lighting plan. What we did is, on the plans themselves, on the utilities plan, we've removed those light, light fixtures. I did, while this is up here, this is Bruce Scannan, just for the record, also.
Thank you, Dave.
We talk about pedestrian ways. In the original meetings with the town, they asked us to do an off-site improvement of putting in a sidewalk. So we have worked on that also. So the, the group has offered to put in a sidewalk. Right now, it comes up to Hayes Park Drive, the one that's closed off. And we are proposing to put in a five-foot sidewalk, I believe it is, up the side of J.D. Hill Road in reference.
To the parking lot.
To the parking lot.
Okay.
Trying to make it so that we're more user-friendly for pedestrians as part of the, I guess it would be part of the master plan, when they, they asked us to look at that. In terms of utilities.
So you, I guess, sorry. So the lighting plan needs to be updated?
Correct.
Okay. Because you can't have the lighting plan showing nine, and that'll be confusing for everyone.
I understand.
Do you know, do you know what the count is?
No, I would just.
It's five.
It's five?
Yeah, I just counted them. There's two along the pond, because you go left, right to left, two along the pond. And then there's another one at the top of the retaining wall, the big retaining wall.
Mm-hmm.
And then you go around, there's the clubhouse, then there's one right there, just to the right of the clubhouse. And then you go down, and there's one in the center of the island, that little island right there. This, yeah, no, up, right there, right where your pen was.
There, and there.
Yeah, so five. That's what I'm seeing.
We removed the ones.
So there were nine, so.
There was two here, there was one here, and there was one here. We heard the neighbors that discussed that, and that they said that they were very concerned with lighting down along the road. And we removed all the lights down along the road. And there was one of the owners at the Hayes Park who lived right here, and they asked us to remove this light post. So we removed those, per what we heard at the town and what we heard at the butters during the sidewalk.
John?
We, I can't believe, we haven't really talked about the sidewalk, and that seems like a huge issue. I mean, that would, that's it right there, right?
Correct.
And how far does that go?
It stretches.
It connects to the existing sidewalk, right at the Hayes Park mobile home entrance.
Oh, okay.
So right, there's an existing sidewalk that comes up to Hayes Park.
I thought you.
And we're extending it all the way to our property, in the town right of way.
I mean, if we're talking about safety, and we're talking about people walking and kids in the road, that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
It is an improvement.
I didn't see it.
Can I just follow up with that?
The code enforcement, they're not going to use signs, they're not going to use sidewalks. I mean, what can we do?
Um, is that going, is that going to take up any width of the road?
No.
Thank you. I just want to make sure.
There's a greenway in between, three-foot greenway, and then the sidewalk is outside of it.
That is actually part of the master plan, too.
Greenways.
Spinning sidewalks.
Yeah.
Because we blew one, if you remember, right? Remember that one?
Mm-hmm.
Darn it. Can't go back.
No.
One more time. Oh, another question. Okay. Sherm Chester, I believe, is on the, on the Zoomer. Sherm?
There we go. Can you hear me now, Mr. Sherm?
Yeah, okay, Sherm. Gotcha.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for taking the call tonight. I want to bring up a point that Doreen had mentioned earlier. I guess I, I, this is my, one of my bones of contention, that Dave Sherbels mentioned earlier, that Doug Eastman had said that the existing conditions were met for zoning as existing use. And the day we did the walkthrough, I was there, and I brought it up to Mr. Eastman, that for nine months of the year, it's a golf club with a restaurant grill, bar, whatever you want to call it, that's functioning. As it's turning into now, it is a restaurant, 12-month-use restaurant, with a golf. use restaurant, with a golf club thrown in. And I just, I, to go back to what, something that Doreen brought up, I think that this issue should have been publicly vetted through the zoning board, since it is a change of use. There is going to be an extra three or four months a year, that this will be a different functioning business. And I, I guess I'll leave it at that, and, uh, whatever can be, can be, but, uh, and I appreciate all the other points that have been brought up about the safety. I had run to the rec store today to pick up something, and I nearly got wiped out right there at the, at the entrance. Somebody, again, not paying attention, coming down the hill, and the firm blocks their view, and they use that as their excuse, if they hit me. Uh, so there are issues in speed, and, and everything that's been brought up tonight is valid, so the, the issue of existing use, that I guess is the one big issue for me, and, uh, I'll throw that on the table, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sherm.
So, do you want to bring that up to the board, line?
Yeah, I think we should, we could discuss it.
Would you bring it back? Do you understand? But it's up to you, but.
Is everybody done, from the public?
Yeah. Well, I think we got pretty much what we want for it. Any other comments from the public? Then, let me close the public session.
Yeah.
Let me close the, the public hearing at this point, bring it back to the board. And let's discuss the situation about, uh, is this, in, in our. In our opinion, is this possibly a change of use? And if that, then we, we don't deal with that. We'll have to go to zoning board, ZBA to get an application. So, is that, it's on the table. Any thoughts? John, you're ready to speak?
Well, I would have thought it was a change of use, but I didn't know the history that there was a restaurant that was open. I've only been to the golf course once or twice, because of looking at the drainage, but, um.
Well, historically, it's been.
It's been there.
Open in the weather.
Yeah, and if it's been open.
Excuse me, come on up to the microphone.
You just closed it.
I just closed the hearing, I'll see.
Paul Scafidi, technically, it is not a change of use, because the Exeter Country Club, as it exists right now, decided to open the restaurant back up and be open all winter and all summer. We have no problem doing that. You can't tell us it's, we can't, because it's been there, and it's been in the past. We're the ones that closed it down, not the use of the building. We could be, we were open all winter long for years, in the 90s and the early 20s. It just wasn't viable for us. These guys, Blind Tiger, is trying to make it viable, and we wish them they, we wish they do. But it's not a change in use. It's always been a restaurant there. It's always been a function room there.
Yep.
So, you know, to say it's going to be a change of use, it really isn't. If we want to open the restaurant again, am I right, Mark? We can do it.
So, there's making something bigger, that's not a change of use, because it's, it's been a restaurant and a function room for whatever.
The footprint is there, if you will, yeah, yeah, I would say.
It's difficult for me to envision this as a change in use.
Yeah.
Because it has always been a restaurant, maybe smaller in size. At the general.
We have two kitchens.
Okay. I mean, I've played golf out there for a while. Um, but I'm, I'm troubled that we're being asked to think about this as a, as a change in use.
Right, it's not our job.
Uh, I don't think that's really our job to do that, but I will defer to other members of the board.
Okay, well, just thought we'd, you know, we like to kind of chat things over.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it is, if, if members of this board were concerned and thought this was a change of use, then I think it would be incumbent upon us to kick this out of here instead of zoning.
Yes.
So, I think whether, you know, we're troubled or not by that question, I think it's a question we should look at every time we receive an application, frankly. Is it, should it be in front of us or not, right?
Yeah.
So.
Most times, every time we receive an application, it's already been to zoning. Not many come through with that, haven't looked at it first.
Okay.
Right?
I mean, at least.
We don't get this very often, but.
It's been looked at.
Yeah.
By Doug Eastman. But I don't know what the ZBA gets every application we see. I think there's a couple tonight that they didn't get.
Okay, but they often give.
Okay, but I, I would say I don't think it's a change of use, personally.
No, I.
It's not exactly the same use, but that doesn't trigger a, a.
Well, it is exactly the same use, it's just more of it.
I would say it's an expansion of the restaurant, current restaurant operation.
Yes, yeah.
So, of course.
Restaurant is still going to be operated as a restaurant.
Correct, right, right.
And I'm sure someone did a study on this, that they can answer the owners, but I imagine the people eating at the restaurant, a lot of them are there that, coming off the golf course, so it's not really more vehicles. I'm going to go get a sandwich and a, and a beer before I go home. A Coke. Coca-Cola, diet.
Any comments? Any comments, uh, down on the further end of the table, either of you ladies?
Well, I, I agree with the rest of the board. I don't think it's a change of use, but it troubles me that the question has come up with, with pretty deep concerns on the part of someone in the neighborhood, and.
And Dave offered them advice.
Right.
If they have that concern.
Exactly.
Where they can bring it if they're not satisfied with this board's opinion, right?
Right, make an appeal.
Right.
Right.
I mean, that's, you know.
That's a recourse.
Oh, yeah, it's what's there.
How we doing, Nancy?
I was waiting for Aaron. I know you were looking at me, waiting for me. Um, yeah, I don't see this as a change of use.
Okay. Well, okay. I would say that's a consensus, seems to be.
Yeah, move ahead.
Now, that doesn't mean if they're upset with this, that they're prohibited from going ahead and pursuing some other form of, to address this. That is not, this is not a final determination, that it's not, whether it is or it isn't. We're just saying that the board feels that for the purpose of this particular case, that this is not change in use. Have I overstated that, ladies and gentlemen?
No, you haven't.
I think it's very clear.
Like an attorney.
Yeah, that's what they pay me for.
It's paid by the word, you know.
All right. Any other questions, or should we move to, uh?
I have some.
Oh, yeah, now you can ask some questions.
I have, I have a few questions. Um, and let's go back to Bruce. Um, so the area bordering JD Hill, the little peninsula, peninsula, peninsula that comes down, that's now larger. What, what is your proposition for that, or your proposal for that, as far as vegetation? Was it going to be riprap? It's no longer going to be riprap?
It's going to be grass.
So, it's going to be grass, all right. And when we were on the sidewalk, there were, um, some, uh, there were tall trees, tall oak trees, and there were some smaller shrubs that were a bit of a concern as far as traffic was concerned. Um, are you proposing doing any trimming there, or is that town?
It's all in the town.
It's all town, okay.
The edge of the parking lot.
That's what I thought.
If you want me to go over to the.
Sure.
The property line is right here at the edge of the pavement.
Okay, all right.
So, it's all in the town right of way.
Okay.
Where we thought that the vegetation was an issue.
Okay. Um, I was just going to say, I'm totally comfortable with the, the lower bushes being trimmed back. Um, I don't want to see the trees cut, and I don't think they need to be. They're not visible, they're not in the way of, they're not in the sight distance, so I, I don't think those are a concern.
Trim for traffic.
Trim for traffic purposes. Um, in the, in the bioretention pond in the southern, if you, I don't know that I remember you talking about exactly what happens with that. Is that, is that vegetated, is that like a rain garden?
It is. It's a very large rain garden.
So, do you have a proposal for that, as far as plantings? Do you?
As of right now, we have the trees that we're putting along the top.
Right.
But right now, it's grass.
It's just grass, okay. All right.
Native, native grasses, kind of thing.
Lawn, I was thinking.
There are times with our, our natural resource planner and, um, where she can maybe lend some ideas on what types of plants could go in there to make it a, a healthy, a healthy bioretention pond, rain garden. So, it would be worth, I would think, asking her about that, maybe. Um, when we were on the sidewalk, and of course, this is, the, the existing conditions are very different from what they'll be when the, the parking has been, when everything has been, um, changed. But I'm, I'm still a little worried about people kind of willy-nilly going into the parking, and it's kind of a free-for-all right now. People go in where others may be coming out. And I'm just wondering, I know it looks like you have a line at the end, um, before you get onto JD Hill. Looks like you have a, a stop bar.
Yep.
And I'm just wondering if it would be worth, um, I don't know how I can explain this, but if you have a line coming down the middle of the, of that, that strip of where the traffic is, that goes into the parking lot, that would make, make it very clear that.
Are you talking in here or here?
Right, so if you go right there where your pen is, yes.
Put a line in here?
A line so that it's clear that if you're in that, if you're on that left, the right-hand side, and you're going to turn and go down into, down JD Hill, that you stay in that area, and when people come in, they're not going to go into the area that should be for the exiting people. If you could do that on, not only that, um, stop bar, but also the one up above for the bigger.
You're trying to, to make it more delineated?
Just to make it delineated and make it clear.
This is entrance and this is exit.
Exactly.
So, you're saying you just basically want a center line for some distance?
Yeah, like a two-car length, maybe. Um, I just, anything we can do.
Two-car lengths would be all the way back up to here, so probably one car length.
Well, that's fine.
You know, like 15 to 20 feet, just.
And maybe even an arrow, a thought, to have arrows?
In and out, yeah.
An in and out arrow.
They're probably commonly used elsewhere, yeah.
Just anything to calm people down.
And a big sign saying, calm down.
Yeah, stop. Um, on your, where you have your golf carts stored, where the, I'm, I'm thinking about the location of the dumpster, and just, um, are the, are the golf carts going to be going in, they're not going to be going into that center section?
Nope, there's five parked here, five parked here.
Okay.
And five and five. So, the whole center is open to get to the dumpster.
Okay. Is there any reason why the dumpster can't come into that section? And just kind of limit the intrusion into the green area? And maybe you don't, maybe there's a reason for that, I'm just wondering.
I think if we pushed it in, how would you park, these are driving this way?
Oh, they're going in, they're not going in headfirst.
Correct.
They're going in through that.
So that they would drive out like this.
Okay.
This way.
Okay.
So that you can get at five of them, you know, 10, they have access to 10 of them, not just the front four.
Okay, that, that, I didn't realize that's how that would work. Um, um, let's see. Dumpster location, fencing, bioretention. Um, we did talk about trees on the sidewalk. Just a thought, I, I love maple trees, but if you wanted to mix those up a little bit, tulip trees are kind of similar to maples. They're appropriate for this area. They have a leaf that's like a maple leaf. They have a nice canopy. Um, so if you wanted to mix something, I'm, I think we're always concerned about having, um, kind of a monoculture of trees, um, because of the way the climate is going. So, if, if maples suddenly start to have a health issue, you'd have other trees that might be able to survive. It's sometimes a good thing to do, but, um, that's a thought. Um, entrance line, where parking. Had you, this is not something that's really our purview, but I just wondered, you have a south-facing roof. Has there been any thought about putting solar panels down the road, just for energy-saving purposes? I know it's expensive, but just throwing that out there, because I like to.
Got to talk about it.
You have.
Yeah.
That'd be great. We, we need to start doing things for our, our planet. Um, oh, somewhere in the plans, there, not only was there talk about riprap in that area we've already spoken about, that is no longer going to be riprap, but there was some somewhere else. Where, and I wasn't sure, that's it, that's the riprap there, okay. I guess that was it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, five. Dave, this is a question for you, and it's, this was something that came up at the sidewalk. There's that enormous light that is on JD Hill, that is not on, it's not part of this project, but just while I'm thinking about it. Did you ever find out whether that could be taken down?
Well, it's.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I mean, they, any street light you can take down, uh, that authority rests with the select board.
That's a select board issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's on our ledger. Well, you'd have to first check if it's on our ledger. I haven't done that, but I assume it is, and it's something we pay for, uh, and we can, you know, ask the utility to, to shut it off or remove it.
Okay. That might be a nice thing for the neighbors, not to have that there. I'm sure that is.
Yeah, it's outside the scope. If you want to just email me.
But it's outside the scope of this, and I realize that.
Yeah, if you just want to email me on the side about that, I'd be happy to chase it down.
Okay. Um, motion issue, okay. I know this isn't going to be a popular request, but I would love to see, um, I mean, the lower parking is kind of a sea of pavement, and I would, it would be wonderful if one spot, one parking spot could be made into a, a green island, like the, the strip that has, um, this one has 12 parking spots. It had 14.
Four.
On another plan. I don't know if it's got 14 now. That's changed. Oh, no, it has.
14.
It has 14 now, or ha- will have 14. Like where that 14 is, if there could be like a vegetated island there, in our, in ours, in our regs, it specifies that long stretches of, of parking are discouraged, and we like to have some vegetation with a, with a tree that has a canopy on it. Um, that would be great.
Our regs do require it every 15, so that's why you see a lot of 15.
Yeah. It says nine, what is it, nine to, what is it, nine to, yeah.
And we did add trees.
10 to 15.
It says 10 to 15, but that can mean 15.
Yeah.
So, you see a lot of 15.
Yeah.
Or staying below 15.
Yeah.
So, we did add trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it.
For the last meeting.
That's great. I appreciate that. And I think it'll enhance, it'll enhance the site. I think that's it for the moment.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Nancy?
I do. Gwen, thank you for the suggestion on the line. That really makes me feel better about the, the entrance and the exit there. Um, I have a construction truck question. Where will they be entering and exiting during construction, if this is approved? Is this all going to be in your parking lot? Or is that going to be down?
Correct, the, the traffic, this is the only.
That will be it. The, the trucks won't be going down the conservation road and.
Oh, I, I don't know what they have for plans for on the golf course and where they might use some of the material.
I'm just a little concerned about the road in that area. It's pretty old, and the, the drainage, and the drainage, if this passes, will be much improved, but for right now, not so much. So, and it's a tight neighborhood, and construction trucks going by those houses and on that straight corner. I don't know if it's in the park you'd ask, but I am concerned, um, about the entrance and exit for that, if it would be contained to their parking lot. No idea.
So, this is where the excavation's going to take place.
Right.
So, the trucks are going to have to enter and exit at this point. And what you asked me about is whether it'll go anyplace else.
Yes.
And I, I, like I said. Like I said, it's my understanding is some of the material the golf course wants to keep for improvements on the golf course. So I'm sure that they will take some of it down this driveway or...
So when we were on the sidewalk, and we kept getting interrupted by the trailer... The tractor, right? Yeah. We had to keep pausing, so... Okay.
So they could go on when it becomes dirt and...
Yeah.
Down that red line there.
And use it on the other parts of their site?
Yeah.
Versus taking it off-site and driving...
Yeah.
As much of it as we could keep on-site. I would rather keep on-site than taking it off-site.
Which will also reduce traffic, fork traffic in the neighborhood, except for that part.
Correct. So I would tell you there will be...
But I just wanna make sure we're all aware of that the...
No, it's a great question.
The construction trucks are not gonna be just limited to that one area, likely not anyway.
Correct.
It's fair for the neighborhood to know that?
Absolutely.
That's it for me for right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was the rest of the board. You all set for now?
Yeah, for now, yes.
No? John?
I'm good.
I think I'm good.
All right.
All right? Well, are we ready to look at the waiver requests? And the packet we received? They're all... This is on a five-page document. Can I ask... Might be ask Bruce to go down through this material?
Do I do one at a time? Do one at a time, yeah?
Yeah, do one at a time, yeah.
Yeah.
So let's get on the waiver cases.
Mr. Chairman, the first waiver that we've asked for is to Section 7.4.10, High-Intensity Soil Survey. This is a large site. We are only doing work on one small area of the site, so we are asking for some relief. Additionally, Section 7.54 also is asking for the HIS mapping of the entire site. So per these two regulations, I don't know if you want to... They are essentially asking the same thing, so I don't know if you want to combine these or not, because they're both about the HIS soils. We've used the USDA soils maps. Do you want me to read this whole... These three paragraphs, or...
Yeah, please.
Okay.
There are five different criteria.
Can I jump on on this one? Because I remember when we used to deal with these all the time, and we haven't been. And we had a discussion with the board a long time ago, because there's site-specific soils, and then there's HIS. And the difference between the two is more nomenclature and translation of one symbol to the other. And when they do drainage, they're doing this generally site-specific soil and test pits correct on the site?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So we've deemed that, as long as that happens, it's satisfied. It's one of the soil survey has been done. So we stopped asking for that waiver based on that. Do you remember that, those comments?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't think... I think you've... I mean, if the board agrees, I think you can skip asking for 7.4.10 or some, you know, the HIS. And generally, those are reserved for septic systems, subdivisions, where septic is required, what you gotta do.
Okay.
And that's usually what they're for, not in this, because they do site-specific for this drainage. Yeah, for this evidence. So in agreement, Bruce, you can just jump to...
7.4.13.
Correct.
Yeah. The lines of existing abutting streets, driveways, and locations within 200 feet of the site. Our site is quite large. If you... We went around the whole site. We're only working on one small corner of our site. If you'd like, I'll pull up the whole property of the Country Club. But we have shown everything within our realm of work, and so we don't believe we should have to do it for the whole perimeter of the Country Club. Additionally, the shape and size and height and location of all existing structures is 7.1... 7.4.15. So because of the size and scope of our project, our site, and the size and scope of our project is only one little corner of it, we're asking for waivers so that we don't have to go around and show everything around the whole site.
Because the majority of... I would say the majority, but a large portion of it is the river, having remembered.
There is. Correct.
Probably at least half.
I can...
No, no. But I'm saying that further to support is that a large portion of the property is nothing... Nobody... Nothing on it but the river.
Correct.
Having had some experience. We've already completed the public hearing, and I oppose it, so it's now all board business.
Thank you.
Mr. Scamman, can you read your two paragraphs on this one, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
These two regulations require that the plans show the various items within 200 feet of the site. However, due to the massive size of the site, 73.25 acres, this becomes very difficult to depict within the plan set, especially due to the fact that only a small portion of the site is shown on the majority of the plans. Performing of survey for the required items would cause our client unnecessary hardship, and using aerial photography to show them might not accurately portray these items. J.D. Hill Avenue is shown on the plans at the site entrance in the abutters. Driveways are shown across the street. Therefore, we believe we are carrying out with the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that satisfy our five?
Well, that's what we're gonna do.
And I apologize because I didn't know... I missed it until today when Mr. Sharples told me that you guys have five criteria that you go through. I haven't done that in other towns, so I apologize that we had written this out as a script, not as a...
I think that covers it.
Yeah, but we should make sure we review it anyway.
Yeah, well, Dave has them ready to go.
Do you have the book with the five criteria?
Oh, yeah.
Just to be sure, we've been caught on this before.
The cliff note...
I alerted the engineer that this was...
And we'd like to get the whole nine yards, please.
Had a lot of controversial approvals in the last five or six, seven years, so by going through these individually, we certainly make sure for the record that we've brought them all to light.
Reviewed them in thoroughness.
Exactly.
I understand.
So I'll read the beginning, and then I'll read the first. The planning board shall not approve any waivers from these regulations unless it shall make the following findings based upon the evidence presented to it in each specific case, and there's a total of five. And the first one is the granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public's safety, health, or welfare, or injurious to other property.
Can you respond to that?
We do not believe that the places that we have not shown, the abutted driveways, roads, and sites, the heights of the buildings, and those outside of where we already have shown, is by any means harming anybody outside of that area, because we're not doing any work on the other parts of the site.
Thank you. Two? Dave?
Oh, sorry. I was reading. I got ahead. I was getting ahead of myself.
Can you help me?
I was getting ahead of myself. The conditions upon which the request for a waiver is based are unique to the property for which the waiver is sought, and are not applicable generally to other property.
The size of this site being 73.25 acres makes it a very unique site for any of the other properties in the vicinity, or almost in town, in the downtown area. So we feel that that makes it very unique.
Because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, a particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out.
The hardship would be the cost of going around the 73-acre site and trying to perform all these survey tasks when they aren't anywhere near the work that's being completed.
Thank you.
The granting of the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
As I said in our... And our... What I read earlier is that we do not believe this is against the spirit, because we have shown the roads and abutting structures to the property.
Thank you.
And five, the waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan, and a lot of times I do that, and just... There's nothing in zoning regarding, you know, structures on a plan or anything relevant to the master plan, in my opinion, so I believe that has been...
Okay.
I just have a question. On the southern border of the property, about how far is it to the first mobile home in Hayes Park? Is it with... It's within 200 feet, I'm guessing?
It is. We submitted...
You have that.
...the aerial. Do I need the microphone, or can everybody hear?
Oh, you should.
It's not just us.
Hey, all the friends at home, throw your top phone at the screen. You need to hear what you're saying.
So the property line runs right up this tree line?
Yeah.
I would tell you that these, in this area, these are probably within 50 feet of the property line. Does that sound about right?
Yeah.
So...
Out 50 feet, down 50 feet.
Yeah. At the most. Correct. It's hard to judge because of the slope that's there.
Yeah.
How high is the fence gonna be?
Six feet.
That's included in your package to the town?
It is.
If we... I probably got it. Did we all get one of those? I don't remember seeing.
The aerial was submitted multiple times previously.
It was, okay.
It's in the town.
It's probably in...
They did lots of them.
No, the aerial.
Because this shows the proximity of Webster and all the houses along Webster. It shows the proximity of the houses along J.D. Hill and the Hayes Park.
Yeah.
So that everybody gets a real feel, because the survey, all of this, for work that's gonna be right here, is...
Makes a lot of sense.
Doesn't make a lot of sense.
None.
Having that... Having the aerial makes a big difference with my comfort level for this particular waiver, because I feel that that's important. That's important to know how close you are to these homes, and you don't get a feel for that looking at this, but... And I don't know that I would need more than that.
Right.
I mean, you can figure it out by...
In the sidewalk, I think...
This common sense and...
Was the other more important thing, I think, for us all to walk out there, see the proximity. We had it painted so that people could see how close, you know, everything was proposed on-site.
Yeah.
We worked with the neighbors in trying to work out those issues with that proximity and putting in the fence and moving those trees.
That's right.
So that that would be closer to protect the people that live in the park also. Additionally, we're up high, and so we have... Partially, we have a retaining wall, but up high, we also have a six-foot fence. So that is all there to protect any headlights that are in the parking lot from shining down... Actually, to be shining over the roofs of the existing houses, so...
Okay. Thank you.
It's kind of an existing condition in a way.
Yeah.
They're moving a little closer, yes, but it's something that's tremendous. I hear what you're saying.
But with the trees being moved, though, the buffer... That's gonna change the sound buffer to...
The fence, yeah.
Yeah. It's not just the lights, it's the sound.
It's the sound.
Yeah.
Vehicle cops, cops, cars coming and going, yeah. But again, that's been going on for years. Not with the current trees in place.
Right.
The trees would have...
Some of that buffer will be lost, yes.
And that's why we agreed to put the fence in, so that you have an instantaneous buffer and barrier to help with that.
So you're dealing with that.
We have dealt with it.
Yeah, I guess I just don't really know how much the fence is going to buffer the noise compared to the tree line that's there right now. I mean, is it...
Correct.
Is there any information on that? Is...
I'm not a sound specialist. I'm not a lighting specialist. And to answer the question from earlier is, we didn't prepare that lighting plan. It doesn't come from our office, so we will work to get that amended, you know, for the later.
The fence itself will probably be as good, which is...
For sound?
Yeah, for sound. The trees aren't that good to begin with, unless you've got, you know, 100 yards of them.
It was pretty thick.
Yeah, but if it's a...
Get away from that!
And in the winter...
You can be 100, you know, 100 yards off of the highway and plenty of the cars, and all trees in between you.
And in the winter, the trees won't have leaves on them.
Yeah.
So that's another...
Yeah, it was just very thick in there. It wasn't just trees. You had a... There's a lot in there.
But...
What's the difference?
Yeah. Anyway. Okay.
Okay.
You want a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
All right. I'll make a motion. Regards to waiver, existing streets, driveways, and information on all existing structures on-site and within 200 feet of the site, waiver motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Blind Tiger LLC, Planning Board Case Number 23-2, for a waiver from Section 7.4.13 and Section 7.4.15 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations Regarding Identifying Lines of Existing Abutting Trees and Driveway Locations and Information on All Existing Structures on-Site and Within 200 Feet of the Site Be Approved.
Mr. Scamman? I'm going to second it.
Sorry.
Okay? I'm gonna call for a hand vote on this, please. So those in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Any opposition, extensions, that carries? Next is runoff, is it?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
So the next one is for Section 9.3.2.6. Runoff from impervious surfaces shall be treated to achieve at least 80% removal of total suspended solids and at least 60% removal of both total nitrogen and total phosphorus, using appropriate treatment measures as specified in the New Hampshire Storm Water Manual, referred to Volume 2, Page 2, Page 6, Table 2.1. Summarize of design criteria, water quality, volume, for treatment criteria, or other equivalent means for practical... The use of material vegetation filters, filtration and/or infiltration practices or subsurface gravel wetlands for water quality treatment is preferred, given its relatively high nitrogen removal efficiency. All new impervious areas drain to surface waters impaired by nitrogen, phosphorus, or nutrients shall be treated with Stormwater's BMPs designed to optimize pollutant removal efficiencies based on design standards and performance data published by UNH Stormwater Center and/or included in the latest version of the New Hampshire Stormwater Manual. Note, the anti-degradation provisions of the state water quality standards require that runoff from developments shall not contribute additional pollutant loads to existing water body impairments. I can keep going into a much more detailed, and I'll try to summarize this if I can. That's the part that we're trying to get a waiver to. So it's not about volumes of water, and it's not about the speed of water, it's about the treatment of the water. And the systems we are using, we do not treat nitrogen to the standard that is required because some of the water is being caught in the parking lot and going, being caught in our system and taken to our pond. So it really does, in some ways, you may not need this because it's not leaving our site, and it's not going into a state water body that is gonna be impaired. We're putting it into a pond, which they add nitrogen to when they fertilize the grass. So what we're saying is, we've removed a lot of the nitrogen in our bioretention pond up at the top of the hill. At the bottom of the hill, it's very difficult to get a system at that part because of the road and the slopes. We're taking that water, we're putting it in our pond, and we're gonna irrigate with it. So there, hopefully, there's less nitrogen that we'll have to use on the greens and fairways. So we're not putting nitrogen into the river, we're not putting it into streams, we're putting it into our own pond, which we're irrigating with. And so it's not affecting anybody off our site. In fact, we're taking water from the town that isn't treated and bringing it onto our site to use, which means that we'll be reducing the nitrogen that runs down Webster and gets down into the creek, which goes into the river. So in my mind, we're improving the situation for nitrogen by taking on the town's water that isn't treated today. So I think that is easier than reading all the exact percentages. I can go through that if you really want me to.
Well, let's go through...
It's another page of...
Let's go through the five steps.
Absolutely.
And we'll see what comes.
Okay.
Dave, you can start that process, please.
Yep. Granting of the waiver will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare or injurious to other property.
I believe it improves the public health and the public waterways by taking the nitrogen out of the town water and putting it on our site for use as irrigation.
The conditions upon which the request for a waiver is based are unique to the property for which the waiver is sought, and are not applicable generally to other property.
The use of irrigation is not used like this on any other site, I'm sure, in town, with the amount of irrigation that is done to keep the greens and fairways open and green. So I believe this is very unique to this site compared to any other site in town.
Okay.
Because of the particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property involved, the particular hardship to the owner would result as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of these regulations are carried out.
So, as I said earlier, because of the slopes of that parking lot, really, the tow slope is on the town property, so it's, if we wanted to try to treat that water, we'd almost have to do it in the town right-of-way. So we've done all the new areas up at the top of the hill, those all go into that bioretention pond, but the existing pavement that runs down, there is some slight changings of that pavement, as we've discussed. You know, we're trimming it back in two or three places and slightly widening the parking lot another, but because of the topography of the slope of the driveway, it makes it near impossible, because if not, we're gonna have a pond under the road, and that wouldn't be, that would be in the detriment of the town's right-of-way.
The granting of the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations.
We believe that we are taking care of our nitrogen and improving the town's nitrogen, so we are meeting the spirit of the regulations.
Okay, thank you.
And the waiver will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance or master plan. I can say that there are no provisions regarding removal efficiencies of BMPs in the zoning ordinance. The master plan does have some general statements about water quality, but doesn't specifically have any provisions regarding removal efficiencies or percentages.
Bruce, I have one question.
Absolutely.
You're adding curb to that further parking lot to catch the water. How high is that gonna be?
The curb itself?
Yeah.
A six-inch curb, granite curb we're putting in. We discussed trying to do a paved Cape Cod berm, but we thought that, we didn't want to take the chance of the water jumping that, so that's why we went with it. And on top of that, we're angling the pavement to try to get the flow going in the right direction before it gets to the curb.
Okay.
So we're trying to, we did twofold.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have a question too.
John?
I think we might have discussed this at the first meeting, but now we've changed things a little bit. So all that water's going into your irrigation pond. Any danger of that thing, like with all the rain we've had this year, any danger of that pond overflowing, and where does that go?
Sure. So I went down personally and walked it after our first meeting, so I can tell you with surety, there's no outflow on that pond. I've walked around it, there's a berm that goes all the way around it, it's a man-made pond, we had our wetland scientists walk in and look at it. There is, it is a large pond, and the amount of acre feet that we're talking about, even though it affects the neighbors in a great deal, the pond itself has a large volume that it can handle. And they can turn off the well that's pumping in twenty-four-seven right now to keep it up. So, in theory, you're also benefiting the...
And if it did overflow, what direction?
What's the elevation?
Does it go towards the river, or is it just spread out around the rest of the golf course?
It would have to flow uphill to go into the golf course.
I don't know. There might be one side.
Yeah, I can walk there, I just wanted to see. I believe we have some rating.
You just saw it towards the wall.
Oh, I understand that, I just am trying to...
I have them in my office, I think I looked at it, and if I remember right, it was, it would have been like the, you know, it would have been...
Maybe on that photograph.
It would take a lot.
Yeah.
It's around forty-four. And elevation...
Yeah.
And I have a question for the engineer, because I was, we were thinking about that and the volume, would that, would the head pressure possibly before it overflowed make it go back and push it back so it wouldn't flow in the catch basin anymore to the pond?
No, there's too much, there's too much elevation.
Too much elevation, okay.
And that's why we also added the fifteen-inch pipe versus the twelve, to make sure that would not happen.
Okay.
So we intentionally increased that pipe. It's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot pipe that we're running all the way back here to the pond.
Right.
And so this pond's here, and you can see this wooded buffer.
Uh-huh.
Let's see, if that's a hundred feet, you got one hundred, two hundred, about three hundred feet of wooded vegetation. I can't speak, because I haven't topo'd that, to tell you whether it goes up, down, undulates, you know.
Good night.
If you wanna know, I can run and tell you, you can keep going, and I can tell you in about two minutes.
You say you looked at it and apparently didn't have a concern, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, it would take a lot, it would take a lot, it's like by the seventeen, the seventeen's elevated there, and the nineteen's elevated, so it kinda, it would spill like around, but it would, if, I don't wanna quote a feet, but it was, it was quite a lot to get there.
There was feet of berm too, I mean, elevation-wise difference.
Yeah, several feet anyway, and a lot, a lot of water would have to be there.
I'm ready for a motion.
Motion. I'll read a motion.
Okay.
Stormwater Management for Redevelopment Standards Waiver Motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of Blind Tiger LLC Planning Board Case Number Twenty-three dash two for a waiver from Section nine point three point two of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations Regarding Stormwater Management Requirements for Redevelopment Be Approved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Hand vote again, please. Those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, abstention, motion carries, that's granted. Landscape strips, is that what you've got next?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Section nine point seven point three, landscape strips.
We talked, you don't, they don't, and let me explain, they don't need this one either.
Oh, good.
So it's...
Good work.
It's only if the regulations, remember what I said?
I do, yeah.
Okay. Where appropriate, existing trees and vegetation shall be incorporated into landscape or buffer strips. Landscape strips shall be at least twenty feet in width and four to six feet in height to effectively screen the view from adjacent residential properties. If approved by the board, the use of fencing, landscape berms, or other types of screening materials can be used in lieu of providing a twenty-foot wide planted landscape strip. So if they weren't providing a fence, a berm, and no landscape strip, then a waiver would be required. They're not providing in some spots the twenty-foot, but they are proposing a fence.
Correct.
A fence, right? They're proposing a fence in lieu of that, so that, that's, as long as the planning board approves it and is okay with that. So I don't think a waiver is necessary, but I think you need to, you know, recognize that you're either approving the fence in lieu of or not.
Did you say you're planting and you're putting trees in as well? Behind the, I might have misunderstood that. Just, are you just putting in the fence, or were there trees going in?
There's trees going in on the southern side of the berm of the pond.
So between the fence and the, and the haze?
Actually, I believe the trees were, would be planted on the pond side.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Were you making a suggestion?
No, I'm just, what time is it now? Yeah, it's my bedtime, that's why I'm starting to get these...
Trying to get a couple more trees, Gwen.
Sheet LA one, Sheet LA one, it shows three deciduous on the south side of the pond, between the pond and the fence, and then, so yeah, three deciduous trees along there. Sugar maples, all of them.
Okay.
And we're fine if you want to, say, or other native trees, I mean, the ones that...
Okay, all right.
That can be a condition, if you don't want all sugar maples, which would be fine with other trees.
We can do that in conditions.
Correct, that's what I was saying.
Okay, I think that takes care of our waivers that we need and don't need.
Well, it's on the basis of what the town planner related to us.
That's true.
That this waiver, we, the board has determined that this waiver...
The fence and trees are part of the vote.
Yeah, I read it, if you have a different interpretation, let me know.
No, 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 but I'm saying, that's the reason for...
Correct.
Yeah.
Not focusing on the waiver at all.
No, there's a waiver's not necessary, in my opinion, and that's what I'd recommend...
Do we need to do something on that, Dave, about like saying we're approving?
No, I think by approving the plan, having the discussion, you're doing it.
We're all set, okay.
Yeah. That's what it comes to. If you don't, then you should, if you have an issue with it, you should raise it.
Right.
We ready?
All right. Chairman's ready for a motion.
I will move at the request of Blind Tiger LLC Planning Board Case Number Twenty-three dash two for site plan approval be approved.
Is there a second?
With the following conditions?
Yeah, we need conditions.
Oh, we gotta have, yeah.
With the following conditions that Dave's gonna walk along.
Well, wait, yeah, well, this, you know, I always bring the ten standard conditions, and I'll read them.
Read them, please, I'd like to listen to it.
An electronic as, number one, electronic as-built plan with details acceptable to its town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This plan must be in DWG or DFX file format and in NAD nineteen eighty-three.
Thank you for coming.
State plane, New Hampshire, FIPS twenty-eight-hundred-feet coordinates. Two, all monumentations shall be set in accordance with Section nine point two-five of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations prior to signing the final plans. Three, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant and his contractor with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing. The following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the meeting. The Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or SWIP, if applicable, be submitted to and reviewed for approval by DPW, and a project schedule and construction cost estimate. Four, third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to the scheduling of the pre-construction meeting. Five, all comments in the review letter from Underwood Engineers dated May twelfth, twenty twenty-three shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town plan prior to signing the final plans. Six, all outdoor lighting, including security lights, shall be downlit and shielded so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and/or roadways. Seven, the Stormwater Management System Inspection and Maintenance Log and the Inspection and Maintenance Manual dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, with the latest revision date of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually on or before January thirty-first. This requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval. Eight, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans. All appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees, inspection fees, prior to the issuance of a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, whichever is applicable as determined by the town. Nine, all landscaping shown on plan shall be maintained, and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced, no later than the following growing season as long as the site plan remains valid. This condition is not intended to circumvent the revocation procedures set forth in state statutes. Ten, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool. The PTAP submit will must be accepted by DPW prior to the pre-construction meeting, and I added these during the discussion. The lighting plan sheet and any other applicable plan sheets shall be revised to be consistent with the utility plan that shows five pole lights. Twelve, an approximately fifteen-foot center line shall be shown on the final plans from each stop bar to the west. Directional arrows shall be painted on the pavement at the entrances and exits onto JD Hill Avenue. Those are twelve suggested conditions. I didn't, I didn't, I don't know what the board, I don't know if it was more of a suggestion you were making, or, you know, it's like something to think about when you said about tree species. I mean, I'd feel more comfortable with identifying a tree species than if you just say any other species, because I've done that before, and sometimes it leads to, like, they buy, you know, I don't know. It should be specific on what it is.
Okay, there was a recommendation from Kristen on the grass too, on the, remember, bio retention, in the bio retention?
Well, generally, I did hear that, you can incorporate that, I mean, bio retention areas used to be very complicated systems. They used to be like, you know, they pick all these fancy plants and, you know, for different purposes, and what happened in the field is they don't knock it maintained. They get mowed, they get whacked, they get weed-whacked, they disappear, and nobody checks them. And the Stormwater Center did some research on this, is they kinda laid it with just, you know, a rye, perennial rye and a fescue, and they found that they were pretty much just as effective, much easier to maintain, and they didn't have those issues that, you know, multiple plantings did. So most, I mean, maybe, you know, you can agree with, but most I'm seeing, pretty much, this is the typical detail now with bio retention areas, for that reason. So I'm not sure, Kristen, you know, I mean, you can, but...
I wouldn't necessarily want it as a condition, given what you've just said.
Yeah, I mean, they work pretty good the way they are with the under, you know, they found that this bearing stuff, and I've put in a few in public projects.
Yeah, okay.
Had some, my personal experience with it.
So Gwen, would you wanna specify, so many maples, so many tulips?
Tulip tree, the other is, another one that could be considered is the new cultivars of the American elm, which are, they may be harder to get a hold of, but those are also great. And I have a list of our, of our tree, our, Justin, I can give that to you, it's online, it's not...
We say, five, I think five trees, if we're talking about, could be any of those trees?
Yeah.
In that way, it gives...
Gives you some latitude.
To look for those, and then...
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
If the American elm's hard to find, I need to...
Yeah.
I don't want you to be restricted to that if you can't get a hold of one, but...
So that'll be number thirteen, I think, Dave.
Five sugar maples.
So can...
Sugar maple, what was the other one?
Red maple, tulip tree.
Tulip tree.
Tulip tree, or an American elm.
But not the American elm, because the American elm...
Yeah, the new cultivars, which are resist, disease-resistant.
Yeah, because they aren't very good. Yeah, because they aren't very good, like the new, yeah.
The new ones, like we have one
Cultivar, American elm, okay. Okay, so the final one would be the five sugar maples shown in the vicinity of the southern. Bio-attention areas shall be either sugar maple, tulip tree, or new cultivar, American elm. So they could be all sugar maples, is that what you're saying? Or do you want a mix, or?
There's several different kinds of maple trees. I mean, I, I'm a little
You say not all the same?
Not all the same.
That's the whole point, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Shall be a mix?
Mix.
Yeah.
Fine.
Of, so, it'll be a mix.
It'll be a mix.
Okay.
Perfect.
Got it.
And was my, my request for a little, a planting in the middle of the parking lot, was that, was that too much?
I didn't, well, I'll leave that under the board. Yeah, I mean, I'll leave that to the board.
It's the number fourteen.
So here's where I would like one, right here.
Well, in the middle of the lot, I see. Where that fourteen is.
That fourteen there.
I see.
Just to break up that large fence.
Probably should go up there. Should probably go up there, Joel.
Right there. Bingo.
Gwen, isn't that gonna be kind of hard to maintain and get started?
Tree grows in Brooklyn?
There's snowplow people going up there.
Yeah, I'm just
The other thing that to think about is, um, our group had, and we've talked about it, I believe in a previous meeting, has a contract that they have to provide a hundred and twenty parking spots. So as soon as we remove a parking spot, we're gonna have to find one someplace else.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Okay. So
Gwen's driveway.
I'm concerned about snow plowing
Yeah.
And your roots start tearing up the pavement. I mean, I agree with you, but I'm just not sure
Okay, I'll let it go.
How well it's gonna
I've got a tree somewhere else.
I suspect it's something there, too.
Is there area, irrigation in the green areas in the parking lot?
Would have put on that ridge, right there.
They've got trees in that.
I don't think it was shown on the plans that it was.
You think?
They'll have the responsibility to keep them alive, but they should choose species that should not need long-term maintenance after they're established.
So I should amend my motion to
So amend your motion, please.
To say it would be approved with the conditions outlined by the
Thirteen positions.
Thirteen conditions just outlined by
Lucky thirteen, you might know.
By the town planner, Mr. Schappel.
Second.
Alright, we have a second?
Yes.
Nancy seconded, okay. Hand vote, those people, members of the board that are in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, I'm raising my right hand, but I want the record to show that I continue to be very concerned with the traffic issue with respect to J D Hill and surrounding area. I want that my vote to particularly reflect that. I'm approving it, but I'm, it's not a reservation, but I have concern, and I want the record to show that I have a full extent of concern.
Thank you. And that will show that record will reflect that. So, let's see, those who are in favor, any opposed? And abstentions, motion carries. Thank you for your time and patience. Thank everybody that came.
They've all left.
Before the show finished. We got more business anyway, so.
I tried to nicely nod, thank them, if they were leaving.
Mr. Chairman, can we take about three minutes to stand up here? We've been sitting for
Yes, certainly.
Almost two, two and a half hours now.
Good idea.
This is like the old days.
You're sitting on your brain feet? Sitting on your brain for two and a half hours? I've got You win, buddy!
We've got an agenda that was ambitious and our last hearing went longer than anticipated. So is there representative for the planning board case number 23-8, the application of Ross Engineering LLC here?
Yes.
Okay. What we're going to propose is continuing you to August 24th at 7:00. Does that work for you?
No.
Okay. I mean, otherwise you're going to be here and we're not going to get there. You know what I mean? Sorry.
We don't function well after 10:30.
It's hard to know that last one wasn't long.
It's not fair to anybody, yeah.
All right. So I'm going to make a motion to continue planning board case number 23-8 to August 24th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Third.
And that's why we're continuing right there. Are you going to vote?
Second. That was the second. Yes, those in favor, voice vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? The ayes have it. Thank you for your patience.
See you next month. Thanks for coming, sorry. Okay. And the beat goes on. We get in the same boat with the application of EverSource Energy for wetlands conditional use permit, planning board case number 23-9. Is there a representative here?
You?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Does August 24th work for you?
Not really, but...
Do you want to go later?
What's that?
Do you want to go later?
I'd prefer to go.
Later?
It doesn't affect our construction.
Like September?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh. No, I understand that, but I'm not dogging that guy, so you get to go. I'm not sending them home and then pushing you up in the line, so...
We can, yeah, we can work around.
I don't think we're going to meet, I mean, before then, right? We don't have anything available.
No, you take, I mean, you meet twice a month, which, you know, more than most planning boards. You do take, you don't schedule a meeting and the second meeting in July.
Right.
And the first meeting in August, you're going to have it, but it's dedicated to the capital approval program.
Right.
So you can't take applications because it's two, three hours of department heads and discussion as it is.
Yeah.
The more I think about it, it should be fine.
Will it work?
Our project's not supposed to start until August 14th.
Okay.
We'll have to work and we can phase it outside Exor.
Okay. All right. So I'm saying, you know, unfortunately, it's just a little bit ambitious here on the agenda. All right. So I'm going to make a motion to continue planning board case number 23-9 to August 24th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Nancy. Moved and seconded. Voice vote, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposition, I mean, excuse me, extensions? Motion carries and thank you.
All right. See you then.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to that, since I'm a PSNH retiree, I'm going to ask the board whether they feel like to...
That's been continued. We can't discuss it.
Recusal?
We can't discuss it. We continue the hearing.
We just continued it.
Yeah, you wouldn't have, you'd have that discussion when they, when it comes back.
I want to make it, no.
When it comes back, have that discussion.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. All right. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
All right.
Okay. The application of Tropic Star Development LLC for a minor subdivision of the property located at Two Meeting Place Drive into two parcels and a site plan review for the proposed construction of a single-story bank with drive-through parking and associated site improvements. So the property is located in the C2 Highway Commercial Zoning District, tax map parcel number 55-75, and is planning board case number 23-6. And I'd ask David if it is ready to be heard.
In my opinion, it's complete for review purposes.
For review purposes, okay. Need a motion, please?
I'll move. Agree. What's the magic words?
Open.
Open this case?
Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay. David, do you have some comments to start us off with?
I do. The applicant is seeking...
Please, the slide for you guys.
The applicant is seeking a minor subdivision of an existing 3.2-acre parcel located at Two Meeting Place Drive into two parcels. The applicant is also requesting a site plan review for the proposed construction of a 2,600 approximately square foot, single-story banking facility with a drive-through parking and associated site improvements. The applicant has submitted a minor subdivision application, site plan review application plans and supporting documents dated May 9th, which are enclosed for your review. Technical review committee was held on June 1st. Copies of the TRC comment letter due June 12th and UEI comment letter due June 6th were also enclosed in your packet. The applicant has responded to the TRC and UEI comments, but when I wrote that memo, I hadn't, it was before, right before my vacation, I hadn't received the plans yet. I did receive them. I went over them and Underwood actually went over them as well. And the, let me just go over review number two from which we received. Did Barbara give you a copy of this in front of you, the Underwood?
Yeah.
Well, review number two was, was only regarding, the only remaining comment was regarding the P-CAP, which is a standard condition of approval that they have to do. So she said, you know, P-DAP, this project requires registration with the P-DAP database, should be performed now as part of the design approval process. Doing so, post-approval may require re-review at the planning board level should the database results be unfavorable. So they're just recommending get on, do the P-CAP, which is a, you know, condition of approval as well. The TRC comments seem to have been, you know, all addressed. They did a really good job in responding it. There is one thing that I had mentioned to the applicant tonight that I still remain a bit concerned about, and it was really one of the only things that was of substance to me on this, because this, this did receive approval for a, I think, a 40, 24 to 40 residential units above commercial space at this site. So all the access on Meeting Place, that, that configuration of that intersection of Meeting Place and Epping Road was vetted, and it was actually to accommodate Meeting Place as well. There's about 120 units back there. So, so all those improvements to that intersection were done, not only to accommodate what's existing, but accommodate a much larger project than is being proposed today. So, you know, that intersection was, you know, was, was not a concern. They've added a right turn in, into the site, but when they subdivided, it's going to add another use down there. I just, you know, still concerned, we had asked them to, and I think the traffic engineer is, is here to speak more fully on it. It's kind of designed 90, you know, in, and there's a center turn lane when we get to that, that you can, it looks like, and there's actually markings that you could get into there and take a left. So I think people will do it anyway, even if, you know, unless it's designed a little bit differently or accept it as a left turn and look at the queuing that goes into McKay Drive and so make sure that entrance is compatible with that and then the queues don't conflict with each other. And taking, coming down and taking a left into Aroma Joe's or coming south and taking a left into this establishment. So I guess my point is, is I think it just needs a little bit more discussion and talking about, but that's the only thing, you know, that I have concern, remain concerned about. Let's see, revised plans dated June 23rd are also provided in the packet. The application is requesting one waiver. However, the TRC question if this was necessary is the wetlands on-site being man-made, which are exempt from our regulations. Brendan Quigley penned a letter regarding the wetlands dated May 11th that is enclosed. After review of the letter by myself and mainly Kristen Murphy, the Conservation and Sustainability Planner, we determined that a waiver was not warranted because all of the wetlands are man-made within, within the project area. So I don't know how far you're going to get. I didn't know if you, you know, you wanted a sidewalk or what have you, but I am prepared with conditions of approval in the event the board chooses to get out, to make that, take action on it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's yours or who's speaking tonight? Which handsome guy's going to speak?
So I do have a PowerPoint presentation if...
Yeah? Oh, okay. Timeout.
TV timeout. I think you covered most of it, so I might be a little retarded.
Reflective to the mindset.
Yeah.
I don't know.
You have a lot.
I have the experience. I don't think we're proud of that. I don't have the experience. What experience do we have?
We had two participants.
Were able to participate for good reasons. We'll see if it was important.
The problem they have in those issues, you're fighting the town at that point. Because we went with what our code enforcement officer said as a rule, right? You're challenging an administrative decision, and it's really hard to win that. I've been in that position with clients. I thought, and I talked to two lawyers, like, oh, your witness is the problem, and we still lost. Because people don't like to...
Yep.
Especially judges. You know what I mean? What's the old saying, like, can't fight City Hall? Have you heard that one before?
Yeah.
Of course. I should move it.
Excuse me.
Of course.
There are needs to gas stations.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sharples, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Chris Raymond from TEC Engineering. Alongside me tonight is Jim Mitchell from Tropic Star Development and Sam Gregorio, also from TEC. Here to discuss a proposed bank development at Two Meeting Place Drive. So you can see here, oh, I cut off a little, but just to kind of orient you where this is, you can see the site is right on the corner of Meeting Place Drive and Epping Road, and it's just, just south of Industrial Drive. On the right here, we have a couple of pictures of the site as it sits today. You can see on the top picture there, it's actually looking north towards Meeting Place Commons, which is the housing development behind the site. And then in the bottom picture there, you can see Epping Road. The site is an existing 3.2-acre lot. It's currently undeveloped and partially wooded. As you can see, there's kind of like a overgrown field there, and then there is, half of the site is, is partially wooded. The site is teed up already with utilities from Meeting Place Drive. When that development went in, all utilities were stubbed to this site, so the, the site is already utility-ready. One important factor of the site is, it is a contaminated site, so there is lead contamination at this site. So as part of the development, we want to go in, we want to treat this, we want to clean it up, and we want to remove all those soils and replace it with, with clean, clean suitable soils. What we're proposing is to subdivide the lot into two lots. In the northernmost lot, closest to Meeting Place Drive, we're proposing a about 2,600 square foot, one-story bank with ATM and drive-through and 21 associated parking spots. We are designing the site so that we can potentially, there's no plans yet for what I'll call Lot 2, the other lot that we're subdividing, but we do want to make sure that in the future, if that does get developed, that it's easily accessible with both vehicular traffic and utilities. Currently, we're proposing site access from a right-in from Epping Road and with two-way access off of Meeting Place Drive. And the site has been designed to allow emergency vehicle circulation. For drainage and utilities, as, as I mentioned, the site is already utility-ready. All the stubs are right there. Our plan is to tie on to those to, to facilitate this site, as well as extend those utilities along the rear of the parcel to the exist, to the, what I'll call Lot 2, to facilitate any future development on that lot. All of our storm water will be collected on-site. It'll be treated and discharged to the existing design points, and all of the runoff generated by the site is decreased for all, all storm events. Treatment for storm water is done using a combination of, it's collected using a combination of water quality units, subsurface infiltration basin, as well as a bioretention pond. And prior to any construction or any of the remediation work associated with the contaminated materials, we'll install all necessary ROGE controls around the site, including stabilized construction entrance and exit, silt fence all the way around the property, and silt sacks in any nearby catch basins. So with that, that's kind of a brief overview, so we look forward to, you know, cleaning up this site, getting rid of all that contaminated soil, and providing a great amenity for the town of Exor. And with that, I welcome any questions you guys may have.
Lane. Lane. John, stand aside.
I've got my pointer tonight. What's, what's this, this road for?
Um, yes, so that's site access.
Is that Lot 2 more, or that in mind?
We're teeing it up so that, so that we don't shut off Lot 2. We want to make sure that in the future, if, if it were to be developed, that we would have a, a two-way access road in the rear of the site.
All right. So...
From Epping Road.
From Meeting, well...
Well, both Epping and...
Yes, yeah, you would have access.
Can I take a left-hand turn and cut in front of the other guys that are waiting here?
Uh, you could, but so that, that's actually, there's actually an ATM right there.
So there's a, if I may?
Yeah.
Jim Mitchell.
Give me the mic. Yeah, I'll need the mic.
Oh, I can't take this.
Look at that, huh?
I'm going to serenade you. I tried. It's even lit green. I thought so. At any rate, Jim Mitchell from Tropic Star Development. So there, as Chris was just saying, there's an ATM here, there's a stop bar right here.
Oh, okay. So that's not the queue for the...
That's correct.
Okay.
So you would be able to make that maneuver in the event that someone's not there, but that's why we've also tried to leave, you know, low-lying vegetation there, so it doesn't create any traffic conflicts. And to Chris's point, the reason why we've striped this is we're just trying to plan for future development. We do not have anything intended for this section, but we don't want to have to rip up the driveway to create two-way traffic there at the time when, you know, we are able to come forth with a project. We have bought the parcel. We bought the parcel back on June 15th, and this is a bank that we've worked with numerous times before, Meredith Village Savings. So you can see a piece they actually bought from us in Portsmouth across from the Beach Plum. Wonderful bank to work with, and they're actually signed a lease for 25 years here. So they're not staying for 10 or 15, they're in for the long term. So at any rate, you know, we just like this turning movement because of the fact that the site, you know, comes all the way down to here. So by having the right-in here, it allows, you know, for whatever we do in the future, not to mention making it easier for someone coming down, down to just come into the drive-thru rather than loop around and find their way.
So you've got two drive-throughs. Okay. If I wanted to go to the ATM, I've got to go through the whole thing as Corkshut, so I can McDonald's for crying out loud. You've got to run the whole building.
Yeah.
What's going on here?
The bank, believe it or not, I'm happy you brought that up. That's a very good point. So this is something that I didn't think of, that I think adds a lot of merit. So in talking to the bank, I said, well, why don't you, like some other, other banks that I've seen, put it over here?
Yeah.
And just have it on the outside. And he said, well, then we did another lane. And I said, well, I understand you not want to block that car, you want to be able to get around it. But, he said, it's actually more than that, Jim. It's actually a loss prevention thing. So when we have an ATM outside, you have to have Brink's service it or one of the others with men with, you know, pistols on them and armored truck come and service the ATM. If the ATM is within the building, then we can service it ourselves. And I said, okay, that makes a lot of sense.
So inside the building, in the little lobby or something?
No, it's physically inside the building, set into the building, but you can drive your car up to it, do the transaction, and then vacate.
Most banks are that way.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, I just didn't realize, and it comes at a great expense.
A lot of them put it in with a, a regular, like they have, you can have your choice. They can go to the window or go to the ATM.
Yeah.
So parking lot out front.
Yeah.
Okay.
Parking here and then a few on the side as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is the, I think we have 21 spaces. Do you have 21 spaces because that's what the plan requires, or is that what you would want?
Stand up in the background.
I am going to serenade you. No, it's a very good point, and that's one of the items of discussion that we had spoken about when we were at TRC is, you know, the number of parking spaces. Quite honestly...
Eleven's required.
Thank you, I was just going for it. So 11...
Because it had a required...
Trying to, it's like weird to hear yourself in the background.
Yeah, it's got a low eye.
So one of the things that we looked at in, in discussions with the bank, and I had the same comment, I said, you know, we've, we've done a lot of banks, this is probably our 10th bank that we've done at this point. And I said, you know, most of the banks of this size would have probably 18. Seems like we have maybe three more or something like that than I would expect. And I said, the board was, well, the, the TRC was asking, you know, what's the reason for the number of parking? And he said, Jim, you know, I think that there's an event that you're probably not very accustomed to, because you're coming into the bank as a customer, just taking out your money, making a deposit. He said, you know, when you have a closing, you have a husband and wife that come, they both are working, so they have their own car. Then you have the real estate broker, then you have the attorneys. And so he kind of gave me this little lesson, and he said, can you imagine, I have five employees, three people working in the commercial loan, so I have eight cars there, commercial loan department, so I have eight cars there. Then you have a buyer's agent, the two buyers, a seller's agent, two sellers, and one title agent. So you have seven people for that one transaction that are coming there with their vehicles. And then on top of it, I have my three commercial loan officers, and who's to say that they don't have people coming in? So it only leaves three parking spots available for them to service, you know, one of their clients. And I said, I never thought of that. And additionally, for whatever it's worth, and again, I understand we have our own project and it has to stand on its own two feet, but I just thought I would like to note that the Service Credit Union has 17 spots. The M&amp;T Bank, formerly the Peoples near the train station, has 17. The Provenant Bank, which is on Portsmouth Avenue, actually has 26 spaces. They have 19 in the front and seven in the rear. And then the Northeast Credit Union across the street has 21. So just for whatever, I, you know, wanted to provide that information and make sure that we turn that rock over. So once I got the explanation from the bank president, I said, wow, that, that makes a lot more sense. I, I all agree with 21.
Thank you for doing that homework.
Oh, he's just waiting to give that presentation.
I have, I have a question about the road on the right that you were talking about for future, for the second lot. So why is it on this lot? Why wouldn't you just put that on the other parcel?
Yeah, so actually, does this have a laser? No. Nope. Yeah.
You can use John's.
Does a laser?
Yeah, to the right of the, to the other side, because you can actually see it. It's, it's gruder. I have a macho... Hold on.
He brings down helicopters to you.
I got some backups.
Cats.
Cats, yeah. So you can actually see on the plan here, so I don't know if I can throw some...
All right, we're all filling it, so dumb.
All right. So you can actually see on the plan here, just to the right of our proposed driveway, there's actually an existing stormwater swale...
Okay.
That stretches the front, front edge of this lot. So without disturbing that, it was really the only viable option for, unless we pushed it way down to the, to the far end of the lot. But as far as for this site, this was, this was about the extent that we could actually...
You think you're going to use that curb cut to service the other lot?
Yeah. Yeah.
So you're going to put an easement into this plan?
Yes. Yeah. Probably, yeah. Sorry to do this, I just think clarification is always helpful.
Yeah.
So just coming to the plan to give you a better sense. So ultimately, I envisioned being able to come from downtown...
Yeah.
And making your way in this way. And probably, in a perfect world, I'm incredibly anal with symmetry, I don't know why, but I kind of want the, the driveway to be in this general vicinity, kind of lining up here.
Sure.
So you'd be able to make that dive off in, but that gives plenty of room for somebody to, you could easily lay out, you know, two or three cars and make that maneuver at, you know, low speed coming into the other site.
Right.
And the site is bound by some wetlands over in this area.
Yeah.
There's a little one that just kind of appeared over here. When we got the plans from the prior project, it wasn't even there. So it's something that, because the soil's been messed with and such, it just kind of now is creating a wetland.
Yeah.
So we're not ready to move forward. We have no tenant for that parcel at all.
Yeah.
We just liked it overall, wanted to clean the site up. It's a great spot for a bank. So, you know, that's what we envisioned here is, rather than sending somebody all the way in like this, coming along the back or even down a road this way in or something like that, we just figured it was unnatural for, you know, predominant traffic coming from downtown to be able to make that maneuver.
It's going to be one-way.
Yep.
And it's the only entrance in there, right? So it's just, it's not just people coming in from downtown taking a right, it's people heading into downtown that have to take a left?
So right now, the full-access driveway is off of Meeting Place, which is right here.
There is a full, okay.
So that's the full-access driveway coming into both the bank site and what would be the future...
Thank you.
...development. And what we've done here with the striping, like I was saying, the whole intention with doing the striping is so that if we do get a tenant down the road, that we don't have to rip up the road and disturb the bank.
That's what you meant by that?
So we want to, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we want to put in the utilities as well underneath that road and stub them right here at the property line so that we can pick them up, so that when we do come forth with another project, or if we do, that we'll be able to tie in without making a mess of everything again.
Can you show me that on, on your aerial there? Yeah, just, what I'm trying to understand is the entering, entering and exiting and that, no, if you go down Meeting Place, you have that little island beyond. The line of sight is going to be all right there?
Are you saying here?
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this piece, half of it is on our property and half of it is on the Felder. I believe the Felder's still on the rear, too. We bought this from the Felders. But the sight line's still, yes, we're not at high speed, we're at, you know, 10, 15 miles an hour there, something like that.
I haven't been down in there, so I, I'm trying to go...
So it's almost easy to go to Meeting Place Drive and then right into the parking lot, and you're going to go to the teller, so, yeah.
Exactly right. So if you, if you're coming off of Route 101 towards the site, you would come into Meeting Place and make the maneuver into the bank. And if you're coming from downtown, we feel that it would be far easier to just take the right into the site, but you can most certainly make the, the right in at Meeting Place as well.
On C4, and I guess it's the eastern, if you're looking east, there's this, there's what looks like a road going up into the other part of the Felder's property. There's a wide, what is that?
Um...
Your turn.
If you can, yeah, way up, I'm kind of over to your right a little bit, right up there.
Yeah, so this is actually a, oh, there's actually a...
To the right of the arrow, or right of the, right there.
Yep.
What is that?
This is actually a little bus turnaround.
That is a bus turnaround, something else.
Yep, so the bus.
It's the dumpster too.
Yep, yeah, they have a dumpster right there, yep, exactly.
That says it's just a grass island, right?
Yes, that is just a grass island, yep, yep. So, bus pickup will happen there, so the bus can come in and pick up the kids from.
So that's an active roadway.
So that's going to be.
Just additional traffic to there and the bank now.
It's going to be.
It might be easier.
It's very, very low use for that circle, you know, maybe a dumpster pickup.
So when the guys come up to pick up the trash, how do they go?
So their dumpster is here, so they leave, I have not mistaken, because it probably happens at 5:00 in the morning. They come in like this to service.
Right.
That's true, if they dump them from the front, yep.
The bus does the turn somehow. So we have a stop light.
Not really any conflict to that, yeah, yeah. When things are working right, once in a while they come in the middle of the day.
Yep.
It doesn't look like that, I didn't even see that on what he just showed us, this.
Now you have a dumpster also on that.
Yep, yeah, that's the grass, that's the grass.
This is the grass, this part right here looks like a road.
Yeah, it's a little.
It's an aerial view.
Okay, so I'm, this is what I don't get.
Yeah. So this is the.
That's what this is, is this. That's, this is this, okay.
Got to go like that.
Yeah.
Get it lined up like that.
All right, I got it, I just.
That's that right there. It's the turn.
It kind of shows.
And that's the dumpster, right here.
That's weird.
They come in, you dump. So that's still on your lot though, huh?
Correct.
Yeah.
We bought it like that.
Really?
It's kind of an odd.
The dumpster's kind of tight to you. I guess it's your property, yeah.
It's yours, but, yep.
There is some existing vegetation there that screens it.
So fire department's all right?
The bank doesn't care, who cares, right?
Going outside.
Got a long tenant.
I'm sorry.
Fire department's okay going outside of the lines?
They don't have to. What do you mean?
The painted lines.
There was no comment made that there was any issue with the traffic circulation.
Just saying that after.
The property lines up here.
No, no, I'm talking about.
Yep, fire department reviewed the plans.
Okay.
There's a fire truck turning plan sheet C9.
Yep.
That's what he's looking at.
Yep, okay.
Yep, but those are just stripes.
Yep.
They were good with it? Fire department.
Go on, have you looked at landscaping yet?
Yep. Lots of landscaping.
Thank you.
Wasn't the first thing I looked at, but it was pretty close to the first thing.
Yes, it was, come on, we know. How many trees?
Some good trees. Rhododendrons.
Rhodies.
How about lighting?
So this is an architectural render of the actual site, so.
Kind of see what it would look like.
It's a good looking building.
I think we're pretty familiar with this site as a board, right?
Oh, yes.
I mean, we've all walked it before.
Oh, yeah.
Right? Have you walked out there? You biked out there. I know you.
Or I did, no, but I don't remember walking out there for any. What was?
Oh, we had an office group coming one time.
That's how we walked out there at one point.
We have.
Maybe I'm wrong.
We have. It's been a while.
It was a while ago.
It was.
Is this where someone wanted to build some affordable housing, and then on the first floor he hadn't decided what to do, he was going to have some storage.
Yes.
Felder's first plan, a little.
He got his financing.
Pre-COVID. Pre-COVID. Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID, okay.
Been a while.
Office and never got any.
That's what that was.
Yes. Yeah.
Even for that, we talked about it, I don't remember walking it, but.
Okay, but you're familiar with it?
Overslept, yeah.
You feel like you would need to walk it, I think is my point?
I don't think I would, no.
Okay.
I'd be happy to if everyone else wants to.
I don't think so, the challenge is, is you've got to get the lead out.
It's not going out. Oh. It's Led Zeppelin night now?
I look at Ford's Barbie and I go, sorry.
Yeah, it's out there.
Well, I wasn't on the board when you discussed Meeting Place before, but I'm fine with not.
You are?
Yeah, not having.
Pretty familiar with that location, right? Yeah, it's a high-traffic spot.
High-traffic, it'll look good in that corner, complement the stuff.
Dave, what was your concern about the roadways?
Is, I've done a lot of these, well, been a part of it, a lot of these right-hand turn onlys that are designed not to allow left-hand turns.
Right.
And when you design it to allow left-hand turns, left-hand turns will happen. I will guarantee you, people will take left-hand turns. Even people that are familiar with this site, if they know they're going to the drive-thru, instead of taking a left, a right, a right, a left, a left, a left.
They're going to go down the smaller one.
They're going to take a left and a left and be at the drive-thru.
Yep.
So, and people will do it, and you can't really, like, you don't want to put do not enter signs, because then you can't, because right turn in, people.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I'm like, if you're going to have left turns in here, which are you going to?
Yeah.
You've got to design it and take that into consideration and see the queues going into a McCain Drive to see if they have a conflict and see what's going on here. Or if that won't work, and maybe why, you know, the turn lane looks pretty wide in that area, so it could be, but just have that analysis. But if it's a really right-hand turn, design it to be a right-hand turn lane. You're coming in at 45°.
Curve it.
Angle.
Curve it.
Yeah, and not 90, you don't tee it up at 90.
Right.
You come and you sweep in as a right-hand turn only. So if you're going to take a left, you can't take, you've got to go like almost swing to the right and then kind of come, like, do a U-turn basically in Epping Road to come from the north to access that right turn.
Right, and I would want to say a left turn right there.
Left turns are the worst.
Right there.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why you didn't put the curving, you know, do the angle there?
Because it goes off the lot.
We talked about it at the TRC, but.
There is the restriction, we are kind of right at the restriction of that stormwater feature. If we try to sweep any further right, we're going to start approaching in that.
You could curve it.
We, yeah.
In and out, right? I know you guys are linear and all that stuff, but.
Right.
I think Dave brings up a really valid point about that. That left-hand, left-hand turns in that area of Exeter are more troublesome, have, being a resident and seeing it grow and everything that's going on, they are an issue. You know, I mean, it's like a suicide lane.
And then it's not just this one.
No.
The second development.
Yeah.
So, say PB Enterprises goes in on the second lot.
Right.
And you're driving down and you haven't been there.
Yep.
See a bank, and then you see PB Enterprises. Do you think you're going to take a left on Meeting Place to go, no, you're going to go and then, okay. And then you'll either abide by it, and then like, oh, okay, I can't take a left here, because there's a center turn lane that has it straight. So you're going, now you've got to get back into the traffic to head, to go down and make a U-turn, and where does that bring you? That brings you to the Columbus Brentwood Road.
Yes.
It's like kind of a cascading effect.
Binge it all the way down Washington Street.
You take a right down there, yeah, there'll be.
And you thought J.D. Hill was bad.
Yeah, you'll take Washington Street because you can't make a turn there, or, you know, around that.
But when the second lot's developed, there'll be another driveway for that.
No, that's not what they're proposing.
Turn in a much.
Wiggle driveway. This would be the only driveway for the other lot.
Right now, the intention, sorry.
You wouldn't.
No, they could come off a meeting house also, I think.
Right now, our intention is coming off of Meeting Place.
Yeah, right.
And then having the, you know, the right-in that we've been talking about now. I'm not saying that we wouldn't look at something different, but at this point right now, we don't have a proposal, so our intention is strictly laying the framework for this, just in trying to make, you know, good traffic flow.
Not cutting it off.
That is a little more concerning, because we talked about it at the TRC. Access management on major corridors is very important. Keep safety, you know, you want to main main access points. When this original Meeting Place was designed, and this lot included, was designed to come off of Meeting Place.
Yeah, I remember.
Now they wanted, I didn't, we didn't really prefer an access off of Epping Road.
Right.
They should access this off of Meeting Place.
Right.
Because that's the way it was originally designed. Now they're carving it on two, and I'm hearing that there could be another curb cut. I think, I don't think the planning board should, I think we need to limit the curb cuts on this.
Yeah. I agree with you.
Go back to the original design, and if it's right turn only, fine, design it that way. If it's left-hand turns, let's make sure it's safe and can accommodate left-hand turning traffic. And not interfere with the queue on McCain. You didn't look at that, did you? Were you the traffic engineer? Did you, did you look at the queue length that Aroma Joe's and the 91 Apartments and so forth of this intersection of taking a left, seeing if it would back up and interfere with a left-hand turn in the area?
Give me a second.
I didn't find anything in your, in your report about it.
So, just for the record, my name's Sam Gregorio, I'm the Senior Traffic Engineer at GEC. So in the traffic report.
Where I read along with you?
If you want to, yeah.
Yeah. Try.
The queueing condition for the, what would be the Epping Road westbound left, opposing Meeting Place, that's taking the left to the opposing driveway, would still be considered something that's left about a vehicle or less.
Wait a minute, where, what page?
I'm on page 18.
18, so wait a minute.
Page 18.
Do we have something in the 18 pages?
How do I find 18?
On 12.
Or is it just on here?
Yeah, no kidding.
Okay.
Not yet, wait a minute, not yet.
McCain Drive northbound left turn, so?
No, it's. McCain Drive itself would be actually on, so, Epping Road westbound left is the condition I believe you're speaking of, which that's the part that would conflict with that left turn, if it was left turning into the drive, the right turn driveway.
Left turn, northbound left turn onto McCain.
We don't have it.
We don't have it.
We don't have it, all right, all right.
But that's all right.
Left turn, northbound on McCain.
In this particular case, Epping is the east-west roadway in the study.
It's got to be.
Based on the orientation of where it is at the site.
Yeah.
Your page got this, did this for the letterhead at the top?
I think that's a different document.
Different document, that's my problem.
We don't have it.
I don't think we have it.
Well, you don't usually get the full.
Ah.
We don't need that.
Usually, no, you usually get the conclusions, if you want the whole things in the future.
No.
No.
Well, unless we really ask.
No, but we got to, can you put them up on there or anything?
You didn't think we could handle it?
No.
No.
We'd be showing under the bill condition with the bank, and I believe the condition they're talking about is, if we had people turning eastbound left into that driveway.
Yep.
The westbound left, you'd have to cross over at that point because of the proximities of the driveways would be close together, right?
Right.
So, in that condition, we'd be showing that in the westbound left condition, the typical queue during that peak hour would stretch out. It doesn't mean it's not going to be longer than this at any time, but we would projectably see the average for the 90% of queue to be about one car. It could extend further, I'm not saying it doesn't, I'm just saying the typical, what you would see. So with that, even with the one car there, this is one of the reasons why we projected it out to be the right turn in only driveway, we don't want that conflict to happen necessarily.
Either way, yeah, exactly.
That being said, the left turn movement from that direction that would turn on a Meeting Place Drive is, at worst case, only about 13 cars in the worst hour of the day. And that's just because banks don't draw as much traffic as they used to, because this. So, and so that's about one car every five minutes, that would be turning that left. So even if you do have that conflicting movement, if there were people to turn left in, it's not a scenario that's happening a lot during any particular hour. But again, this is why we're proposing the right turn in at that location to make, because we don't want it to happen. And the good thing at least about the bank portion of this, and again, we don't necessarily know the next tenant, or if there would be another tenant on the other lot, is, a bank is typically 90%, everybody knows where they're going. It's the people who use that bank typically, very few extra people maybe using the ATM, but even that's been going lower lately because no one wants to pay the extra fees anymore for using someone else's bank. So, the people who go to the bank are the people who are really, we're not looking at the people who necessarily miss the driveway in this particular case. Again, this is, I know the item was brought up about potentially the next tenant, because this will also services them, we do understand, we do not know who that tenant would be or what it would be at this time. But again, in our sense, if it was even a small amount of cars that ended up bypassing that roadway and forced into that driveway as a left turn, being that it was only 13 cars at the beginning, it comes from a direction, it would even be much less than that over the course of that worst hour of the day. But, outside of all that, we were still proposing it as a right-in driveway, we weren't expecting there to be left turns in. And I believe, unless there's, I think there's objection to the team, which I don't think there was, I think we were willing to do some modifications to that driveway, to make sure that that would not happen. I mean, you can't always guarantee that everybody's still going to follow the rules then.
No, but you can design it so you get.
It makes it as uncomfortable as possible.
It becomes difficult. This is, I think, easy to get left, and people are going to, and I understand the slight volume, but all your left-hand turns in here are E or F level service. So even a couple, I mean, people are going to wait there long, long, you know, with excessive control delays resulting, and then, you know, then when they do that, they wait long enough, they take chances after a minute or two, that they wouldn't have taken earlier.
Yeah, and if those particular movements, the left turns on Epping, it would be a lot less than the F, the movements coming out of the driveways, which are those F conditions, which are already F now. So, we're not, with our minimal trouble, adding on a way of minimal to that, but those are the driveways on-site off of Epping Road.
So you didn't model what the level of service would be for a potential left-hand turn coming.
Into that driveway.
Into that driveway.
Not, but part of our study, because again, we were assuming as part of our study, it would be a right-end driveway.
Dave, do we, does the town want that driveway?
Well, we tried to ask the bank to do alternatives and so forth during the TRC process.
Yeah.
I mean, they did make an argument as to why it's needed and it will, you know, you know, they really want it. And if they really want it, it's like, it's got to be right turn only in. We do not want left-hand turns off of Epping Road.
But I know.
And use Meeting Place, because it's just a, it's a, you know, it's right there.
I don't understand the need for it.
Right, what?
I don't see the need for it.
What was their reason for really wanting it?
So, yeah, I appreciate the comment very much, so, the right-hand turn really is, if you restrict a movement, you create it somewhere else. So the traffic's already coming from downtown into the site, and we're anticipating having hopefully another user there at some point. And to send them on, going all the way around Meeting Place into the site, it's a heck of a lot easier for coming from downtown to be able to just take the right into the site and then go into where the future development would be. Additionally, the bank really liked the flow of the site and sees how it would be beneficial for people coming downtown to be able to just go right into the drive-thru and do their transaction and then leave out of Meeting Place. So, I don't know if the board can see, but Chris just tried to illustrate changing the geometry and avoiding the head wall, I guess, is that the right term?
Yeah.
The head wall that we have there, the drainage that he was referring to. So, essentially, it keeps the entrance in the same area, but by, you know, manipulating it that way, you're really discouraging people to make that maneuver. That would be kind of wild, I would think, and be driving all over landscaping and curving.
Sure.
So the way that Chris has laid it out now, if that behooves the board, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that.
Yeah, to me, it has to be something, it's going to make it easy to turn in, it's going to be more welcoming to take that, and driving is not going to make any difference, I don't think.
No.
It will dissuade the left-hand turn.
Yes, it will, yeah.
That's really, I mean, I'm not saying, right-hand in.
Yeah.
If it's designed that way and that's the way it's used, that's not an issue.
Right.
Not, right.
Well, it's just the curb cut's not great, having another curb cut. That's the part that's not great.
Especially if you don't have a D cell lane, but I don't know, but, you know, I don't know what's going here to the right, and they don't even.
Right.
So if something, a high user comes in, then.
That's a different story, and we're looking at traffic all over again anyways at that point.
Well, yeah, but then.
But you already have this.
You're getting your access off of here, so what I'm hearing is you need your access off of here. So we don't want to redo anything we already did.
No, 100%.
You know, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'm just trying to think in forward, like, it's okay, and then the people will be like, the bank will be like, what are you, what are you doing? Like, sure, so.
I think, you know.
It's just something we've got to wrap our heads around, right, you know, and be comfortable with that, I think. Because this was designed, this lot was all designed off of Meeting Place.
It was, it was, because you're coming here.
But it wasn't a bank use, it was a completely different, yeah.
And I get the thing, and I don't mind a right-in, I just think it needs a little more.
Well, we've been through this parcel before, and we were supposed to have limited curb cuts. And they're already built, and it's called Meeting Place Drive. And now we're looking at a subdivision and an additional curb cut and hearing that, you know, and I get it, you want to keep your options open and have the best project you can, I completely empathize and understand that goal. But if you're, you know, I don't think we really want to see, we, meaning the town, want to see another curb cut for the bank lot and a potential additional curb cut for future development. So, if your real intent is going to be to have this right-hand turn be the access for the undeveloped lot, then it makes sense to design it properly. But if that's not the actual intent, I would think you're better off leaving your curb cut option open to the lot that's undeveloped, if there's another place to put it.
So this lot, just reminding you, because it's kind of hard and deceiving, I think, in a lot of manners, to look at it as just what the developable area is representing today.
Yep.
We have like 550 feet of frontage.
Yeah.
So there's an awful long, you know, straightaway, if you will. And again, I can understand the point and agree with the point, if we were putting traffic back out on that. the point and agree with the point, if we were putting traffic back out on Epping Road, but because we're taking vehicles off of Epping Road and still forcing them all out.
As long as you're taking them on the right side, though, if you're taking them off the left, it's not, it's not a win. If they're taking a left, taking off Epping Road and they're taking a left into your site on that little queuing spot, that would be an issue.
That's why we're trying to, you know, redesign. Redesign it so that it's, it doesn't accommodate that.
Right, I understand that.
But putting that curb cut there, aren't you, and that's not our problem, but aren't you limiting yourself on what's gonna get built next door?
Um, I don't believe so, because of the fact that it, it kind of naturally lends itself there with the head wall that we have and the manmade wetland swale on the front there.
There's a swale, right.
It's kind of hard, kind of hard to see on, on this one, but it, this is the.
I get it, yeah.
Yeah, so this is a natural for us to just pull vehicles off, get them into the site, and then safely get them out of the site by putting everything back out on Meeting Place, which is clearly designed to accommodate it as a very wide, flat driveways and such.
To get to that other lot, though, if I'm coming, I don't know what it is, eat, uh, south?
Yeah.
Kind of south, to get to that other lot, I have to go up Meeting House.
Coming south, yeah.
Yes.
To get to that.
Under what we're.
I might drive by that.
Under what we're presenting, that is correct. You would have to come into the Meeting Place driveway.
Meeting Place, yeah. So if I'm a. I'm a, I don't know, a gas station or whatever, that, that doesn't work for them at all. A doctor's office might or something on that other lot.
On the other lot?
On the other, talk about the other lot, when you develop, you're back here, we're talking about what are you gonna do for access to that other lot?
Sure.
Depending on what you, if, if, if that's your only access to that other lot.
We have the, we're planning for.
Meeting House, I mean, Meeting, yeah, Meeting Place.
Sure, we're planning on having the right in from the downtown, but then ultimately having the full access along the rear of the site. That's correct.
Alright.
And you'd have, presumably you'd have, you know, a drive aisle somewhere along the front of the site, not a curb cut, but a drive aisle, to allow for, ideally, allow for circulation around the building, not only for fire, but just good flow, and then be able to then exit out onto, onto Meeting Place. Yeah, I wish I had a crystal ball and I wish I had a tenant, but we're not that far yet. We've put a lot of time and effort into this plan and.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a good plan, and it's a good use.
It's a good use.
I think it'll do well, and if you gotta wind up, that's perfect.
It's a statement piece, and, you know, we're a small company, so we're planning on keeping this, this is not something that we're gonna sell, and, you know, I live in Hampton Falls next town over, so I'm gonna be here all the time making sure it's meticulous.
Well.
Yeah, what's the contamination plan? The contamination plan?
Remedial action.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, so we have a.
Sorry, kidding me.
We have a remedial action plan and a soil management plan for the state of New Hampshire. We've had numerous conversations over the last many months with them, and as of now, there's no further action on the site. We could actually build in a different manner and be able to go right on top of it.
Yeah.
This is self-serving for us and the community, that we wanna remove the contamination. So it's actually a very hefty number, we're investing up to five hundred thousand dollars to remediate the soil, there's three thousand tons of contaminated soil to haul out of here, it's done in a very special manner via the soil management plan, so that no one's going to get hurt or anything like that, we have the property fenced off and the property, I'm sorry, and the soils will be loaded into dump trucks and disposed of properly. So we have the company already ready to rock and roll, they're just waiting on us, and we're waiting for final comments from the state of New Hampshire, but they just sent a request for more information and our traffic, I'm sorry, our environmental consultants are working with them. And for whatever it's worth, we've done a lot of contaminated sites, I don't like to, but it's the nature of what's left, so we have a lot of experience in working with contaminated sites.
The last lot.
It's just on your lot, too. It's just on this particular, not on the other half.
Yeah, there's a, there's a plan that.
I remember that.
Chris can flip to. It's basically where the bank building and the drainage is going, and so the, the thought process is, when you go ahead and remediate the soils that are underneath essentially where the bank will be in the drainage system.
Good God.
It allows us to not have to fill the entire cavity back in, because the drainage system's gonna go there, the footing for the building, so it, it works well that way to kind of balance it out, and if we weren't able to, like we are, if we weren't able to remediate all the soil, the bank would be perched up about four feet above road grade, and we really want it to be level with the road grade as much as possible, so that it really, you know, accentuates the corner as you come into the downtown.
So that's a requirement, I'll say, to put that much material between a structure and its floor and the existing treated area?
I can't speak to if it's a requirement or not, but I, we, we asked our engineers and our architects long ago if we could build on top of the material, and the answer was yes, I guess the prior proposal before the board, they were doing the same thing, I guess, but when we found out and we knew that the contamination was there, we said, we have to find a way to get it out. So that's when we started the whole entire process, so we've been working on the site now for about two years and just ready to go.
Wow.
The site work, quite honestly, if given the AOK, we would try to start in August for the contaminated soil remediation, so we fenced the property off, and they would only have access to it to remediate the soil, when the soil's remediated and everything is cleaned up, state signs off on it, that's when we start to do the rest of the improvements.
Just a lot of, lot of bad stuff just stuck there for years and years and years.
How about the lighting? How about the light plan? Please. I don't, I'll destroy it, oh.
Ah, it's not on here. This is televised, right? You're fired.
That's L O one.
The last one, probably.
There it is.
Uh, look at that.
So one, huh?
Rehired.
Just kidding.
That was so easy to read.
I think you're gonna need to un-buckle it, there you go. I'll give you the microphone. Was there a question on the lighting plan?
I think he wants to hear things like dark sky compliant, no light going off site.
Oh, yeah, yep. Was, was there a question or you just wanted?
Just describe it.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, so we're just using standard Cobra headlights spaced throughout the site, there are a few building mounted lights, no trespass along the borders of the site, along the property lines, no light trespass, and yeah, dark sky compliant fixtures. Are these LED? LED, yeah, LED light.
There's a lot of detail in your proposal.
And with the dimming.
I think.
Is the lighting set on timers to dim or turn shut off after standing, standing out, or when the bags close?
Do you know?
That's a requirement of a regs.
Oh, then yeah, then.
They will be.
They will be.
Good idea.
You're rehired.
Keep that boy. Oh dear. See what happens after ten thirty?
You have any other concerns, Dave, on this plan, other than the turn?
No, I'll, you know, everything else has been addressed through conditions of approval, through provisions that they made, the only thing I had was thinking, and also, I mean, there, I did make a condition of approval of an access even, because they represented that, that, then, then access seventy-five-one, two-seventy-five, so.
Right.
I think by subdividing it, that's a reasonable condition of approval to say you need to show an access even, because they, they say it, you know, to facilitate one-way traffic prior to future development of a body lot, they make the point, but on the subdivision plan, there's no mention of an easement or anything.
Right, I brought that up earlier.
Because if there's two owners, they sell it, not saying you will, but, you know, then, then it's like, they come to us, like, well, we don't have any access.
Right, yep, we need a curb cut.
They need a curb cut, no curb cut.
Hard change, can't cut the curb.
And, and now the lighting with the dimmer, so I just.
Yeah. Are we okay with landscaping?
Yes, I saw that.
I need to open the meeting to the public, so the public is invited to speak if they'd like.
What was that?
If you'd like to speak, under the microphone, introduce yourself, so those that are viewing see who's speaking.
Okay, I'll went back to J L.
If there's nobody else that wishes to speak, at this time, I'll close the public session. Back to the board.
I can't even think of words.
You ready for motion?
Oh, wait a minute, what were we looking for?
The landscaping.
Yeah, I was okay with that.
C seven.
I think you've got a, Dave, you're gonna have to, if we're thinking about voting, which I think we are.
Yes, do you have a condition?
We have to figure out how to word the condition regarding that access.
Oh yeah, I already got it.
Alright, can you tell us?
Yep, hold on, just a second, I'm, I'm finishing up the condition.
Share.
No.
I'm not the secret teller.
We're all tired.
I'll get there.
It's not in the V S Noel.
Yeah, right, now just vote, be on the later. What the heck is going on?
Oh my God.
I gotta understand, we haven't had regular meetings, because I haven't had anything to conduct. So this is back new.
He's got something. So which, you're talking about the subdivision?
Yes.
I have three, three proposed conditions for the subdivision, it would be a DWG file, the plan shall be provided to the town planner, showing all property lines and monumentation prior to signing the final plans, the plan must be an NAD, nineteen eighty-three state plane, New Hampshire, FIPS, twenty-eight hundred feet coordinates, and all monumentations shall be set in accordance with section nine point two-five of the site plan review and subdivision regulations prior to signing the final plans, and three, any future development of lot seventy-five dash one shall utilize the proposed accesses over lot seventy-five. Final subdivision plans shall show an access easement from Meeting Place Drive over lot seventy-five to lot seventy-five-one, no curb cut shall be granted for lot seventy-five-one.
Can you say that part again?
You guys good with that?
Any future, you want me to say it again?
Yes.
Any future development, okay, let's, let's set the stage, lot seventy-five is the bag.
Yep.
Seventy-five-one is the, is the one that's adjacent. Any future development of lot seventy-five-one.
Yes.
Which means the non-bag one, shall utilize the proposed accesses over lot seventy-five. So there, there's two accesses, you can either come in the right turn lane, or they can come from Meeting Place. Second sentence, final subdivision plans shall show an access easement from Meeting Place Drive over lot seventy-five, so coming from Meeting Place Drive over lot seventy-five, probably on the north side, I mean, on the, I'm sorry, on the east side.
East side.
You know, where it's, where it's indicated, but I guess that'd be up to them, to lot seventy-five-one, so, over seventy-five, Meeting Place across seventy-five-one, and then no curb cut shall be granted for lot seventy-five-one on Epping Road.
Do we have to put that in there?
The last one?
Yeah.
You don't?
I think it's pretty restrictive to put that in there.
Sure, you don't have to, but that's what this is saying anyway.
I understand it.
You can just, you can just remove that last sentence.
I think, yes.
Go ahead.
That's all I was getting at, is without knowing what we're doing on the other lot, I, I hate to put myself in a box and come back before the board and tell them, you know, I was lying, because I'm not gonna lie to you, I'm gonna tell you exactly what I expect.
Somebody offers you the right amount of money for that other lot, and they need a curb cut, I don't wanna see you not able to do something, so.
And I appreciate that, I just, I don't know what the development's going to be, I don't even know if we can, based on the wetlands that are there, we just haven't gotten to that point yet, so, again, I appreciate the board's consideration on that, and I understand that the goal is to reduce the amount of curb cuts along Epping Road.
Right.
So we'll definitely keep that in consideration with any future proposal, but I just don't wanna be limited to no curb cut in the event that, you know, we have something that everybody feels makes sense, and then I'm asking for a variance or something like that.
Well, this is already saying that, I just said it, the first three sentences of it say exactly that, I was just saying, and then another one, another one. So if you're.
Saying what the access is.
Any future development of lot seventy-five shall utilize the proposed accesses, you could say, you know, you could say, oh, yeah, they'll shall utilize this, well, if they're getting a curb cut, how are they gonna utilize that? I don't know, I mean, I think.
I think it's a different step, David, myself, I think, I understand what you're saying.
You can.
By not putting that specific restriction in, I think we do make it more open for them to come forward.
That's not how.
And add for an additional access, because yes, they shall use that, but also this, I mean, come on, the stuff that we've seen go through.
Well, I get it, I get it, but I think, I think access management.
And I'm not gonna say it, because Doug will get mad at me again.
Access management on major corridors is so important, I can't say enough, how many transportation traffic corridors come in and they just want another curb cut and another curb cut, until the road is, I don't wanna use the land, and then, and then you get lights everywhere, it's just, I see it everywhere, access management is so important, if, if you, it's, it's a safe way of doing things, have nice, well-built intersections that people can get off, and then travel on, you know, travel on slow roads to access the developments along the corridor. I mean, I mean, there is gonna be a point, we have a, we have a plan right now here that there's a median here, we have that planned through V H P when we looked at a corridor study, and a median could be going through here, so I guess that would be a moot point, at that point, but, so, it's very important on major corridors.
Yeah, okay.
Oftentimes, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but oftentimes, we're asked on adjoining lots when we're developing a site to have a future cross connection or something like that, in this instance, planning tells me that it's a good idea to have access, obviously, for the future on Meeting Place Drive, and if the concern is that if we were to have another cut on the future pad, that we wouldn't be utilizing that, then I'd say that we could say that, again, I don't remember the lot designation, but the future developable pad will have access through the bank lot, if that's the concern, we can most make that, make that a stipulation, so that that access is in fact there, no matter what, for that lot. I'm fine with that, I'm not fine with Epping Road saying no access, because I just don't know what I'm doing yet, but.
Well, you have access.
Right, but for the, but for the future cross connection part of it is what I'm saying, that, that, I mean, the connection can most certainly remain, we have no problem with that.
Connection can remain?
That gives you access to the lot.
Correct, I just, I'm just saying that I don't wanna restrict us to have no access off of Epping Road when I don't know what we're doing.
You do have access.
Yes.
Meeting Place to cross every.
We're saying we wanna give you what you're asking for tonight, but don't come back and ask for another curb cut later, that's what we're saying.
No, I agree.
You're good?
And no, I'm saying that I don't know what we're doing on, on the future developable pad site, and I don't wanna put myself in that box where I'm, you know, telling you I'm fine with it, and then I'm coming and seeing you in a year saying, I'm not fine with it, because I don't know what it's gonna look like.
And I don't know why you need the curb cut now.
Such a broad frontage.
Anything we decide tonight, another board could do something different, right?
No.
No.
So we say this, this is it, there's no more.
It's a subdivision.
Yeah, the planning board dictates, regulates the curb cuts. We give driveway permit authority, the planning board gives driveway permit authority to EPW, the roadway agent, Jay Perkins, and the town engineer, but when it comes to subdivisions, you control the access on this one.
Right.
And my understanding was, that was the reason to need that entering, taking a right-hand turn, was for that next lot.
Correct.
The undeveloped, so I don't understand why we're starting all over. Are you saying that in the, you want to be able to have another curb cut?
I honestly don't know, but with such a broad frontage at 550 feet of frontage.
He's saying he doesn't know, he might need it, he might not.
No, I, I, no, truly, I don't, I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Today.
I know, but I hadn't finished.
We think about one curb cut for every 600 feet of frontage on Epping Road.
Go ahead.
His thing, so you don't even have that. So, we saw one curb cut on that lot. That's what we recommend, and I think it's one for, like, we only give two curb cuts if it's 1,200 feet.
Right.
So, I don't think we're, you know, like, and now you're making a short area, like, I just, I, I don't know, I don't see, I would, put it this way, when you come forward in a year or two, if you ever want a curb cut, I would not support, I would support access over there, or, you know, that's it.
I don't even know what I'm gonna have, is all I'm saying, and I just don't wanna, I don't wanna say that it's acceptable now.
I don't even know that I would, I mean, I don't think the board should support a future development of that that has its own access on Epping Road. I don't believe that they should.
But I don't think we can, I don't think we can do that.
Do what?
I don't think we can bind ourselves.
You don't have to.
Well, all right, but then, all right, but we've been worrying about this.
So I don't think, I don't know why you would.
Fourth sentence.
It's a pretty important one, Pierre.
It's all about access management.
That's why I brought it up at the beginning.
It's all about access management.
Why we did the study there, for the, yeah.
It's all about access management, at the same time, any user wants unfettered access to their property. They, they want, they want in, out, left, right turns, they all do. They all do, and I get it. I get that, they want their customers easing in and out, but then there's a conflict with safety.
Yep.
And, kind of turning that ship around, and getting people in controlled access points, and getting them to access management is a good idea.
Once the safety part of it's given away.
Well, to me, that's your other natural point, right there.
Yeah. Do you have the overall safety plan, which was the whole entire thing?
So you're good with any future development of the lot 75, Aaron? I mean, 75 shall utilize the proposed accesses over lot 75. Final subdivision plans shall show an access easement from Meeting Place Drive over lot 75 to lot 75-1?
Yes, period.
No, they are, because it doesn't say the one step further that you said before.
I think.
You think it does.
I think, well, the intent, it's all about intent. So you can, you know, you ask six lawyers, get six different representations. You know, my, that intent was the same, I was just repeating it in a different way. But, if, it, it could be argued that it says, okay, yeah, you shall utilize this, but I utilize it once a year.
Right.
The owner utilizes it, so we're gonna go over here. So it does leave a little wiggle room if you want, if you want to. I think it's a, I, I, I think you should do that, do that, but what I'm saying is, is if it comes again in the future, and I'm still here, I would never recommend another curb cut on Epping Road.
Sure.
In this area.
Yeah, it is a lot.
Particularly with the existence, with the existence of an access easement.
Right.
You already have.
Right.
So, just playing a little bit with this, if the second lot is developed, and they ideally wish to enter on that end of the lot, they could close this one off, and that, and use that one curb cut instead of here, over here.
Maybe it sounds like 26 years from now.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'm just saying.
Because the bag's not gonna let that.
They might.
The whole parking lot.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, maybe, possible.
I mean, the only other thing you think about is, do you just say, on the existing lot that's before us now being subdivided, do we limit it to one curb cut on Epping Road? And once they subdivide and use that curb cut, that's it? Or, like Lang's saying, if they swap it out, who cares?
That's saying the exact same thing.
Unless they move it.
Yeah.
Because I would be okay if they moved it down the road.
I guess so. I think, I think.
I mean, if it's the same owners, and they wanna change their project, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, that, that works, I mean.
It's kind of a catch 22, it's a little hard with the tenants, because.
First of all, it can't be.
Like, right now, I'm locked into a site plan design.
Right.
And to be like, this is what you have today, but in the future, could be a year, five years, 10 years down the road, if we have a tenant, and we wanna do something different, then I take that away from you. They're gonna go, ew, what does that look like?
Well, you gotta negotiate.
Well, but let's, let's, let's talk this through. I, I hear that. But, just, just, just think of a scenario. A user comes in, and you have this lot, and it's upsize. This is where your access points are. So why, what, what, what are they gonna, what are they gonna do? Where is this gonna, you know, like?
So I'm a retail developer.
It's gonna be, like, if it is, it's gonna be like a drive-through restaurant, it's gonna be a, a gas, he says, like, I want.
I don't envision either of those here, quite honestly.
I know that, so this is where I'm going with this. It's like, it's almost gonna be like a, a, you know, medical office, or architect, you know, firm engineer, or something like that.
We don't know.
So, no, no, we don't know, but what I'm saying, you're saying, you just said it wasn't a fast food restaurant with a drive-through.
I said I don't envision that.
No, because they're not, they're gonna want a full-blown curb cut on both directions coming in and out.
They very well may, and I think, to my, to my point, though, I mean, right now, this little mark is the head wall for where we're talking about the right-hand turn-in. This is the additional frontage that we have along Epping Road.
Yeah, it's like.
And again, I don't know, it's probably 300 feet or something like that. I mean, it, it's quite a ways. Yes, there's this wetland projection here, and again, we don't know exactly what we can do, you know, what we're going to be allowed to do, and I don't know what tenant we have. But again, I just don't wanna say.
But you're in front of us.
It's the future.
Asking for a subdivision, right?
Correct.
When you're doing that, we're gonna consider curb cuts on this major corridor that this town just spent ridiculous amount of money improving, which is why this site became intriguing for you and your potential tenant. So, you gotta understand, we really wanna get the access issue resolved now. We don't wanna do it when you come forward with something next year, 10 years, next week, I don't know. We really do like to pin things down.
Sure.
So.
I guess, you know, my question is.
Why do you need the curb cut now?
Yeah, why?
Get rid of it now?
Are you talking about the right-in?
Yeah.
I need it, it's a convenience item.
But the, but the right-in, on the right-in?
That's it, that's it.
That's the access.
It's a, it's a convenience item.
Well, then that's the access.
Again, to my point of, if you restrict a motion, then you create it somewhere else. We're just taking existing traffic and pulling them into the site sooner, rather than making it loop.
But it's only 100 feet.
Oh, it's longer than that, if you consider going down Meeting Place, coming back in the site, and looping around.
But, I mean, as far as, I turn into Meeting, Meeting Place, I'm almost like I'm turning into the thing. It's, it's, it's an easier turn, it, better sightlines, I don't know what's still on, if you took the picture down, but what, what's gonna be south of, what's gonna be on lot 1A, whatever it is?
Is it that one?
Is it, right now, there's a lot of trees and stuff, do they have visibility to that driveway?
I, I'm sorry, I don't know where you're speaking to.
If this is your.
Future developable lot.
Is this all tree here, are they, can you even see this driveway?
Currently, that is vegetated.
Yeah.
That little front.
So you have a plan of?
I don't have a plan to.
Make it more visible?
Second line.
Coming down the road, we most certainly could.
It's right there, yeah, I think they should get rid of this.
I think they should do.
If you, if you reconfigured, if you go back to the drawing board, my guess is that, my guess is that you don't wanna have people coming to the bank and having to go way down Meeting Place Drive to get in. So if you reconfigure this, and have a safe distance between Epping Road and an entrance way, redesign and have an entrance way going in closer to Epping Road, would that be more palatable for you?
Quite honestly, if the board is asking what I would like, in a perfect world, I'd like to be.
I know that's not what you want, but.
But I, I don't know if I'm addressing the question. So the Meeting Place access remains the same. The right-in off of Epping Road, I guess if push came to shove, and I have no choice, and the option we're given to potentially move the curb cut in the event that we needed to, down the road, I'd take that option over, we're not approving it. Or I have no access on the other lot off of Epping Road. But, again, that requires, you know, I don't know who I have as a bank president, I don't know where we are at that time, did they sell the bank, you know, who knows? So I really just hate to put myself in a box. It's just like, the good planning thing that I said before, where along the back of the site, we're planning to not rip it up, so we're doing the pavement now, it's just because it's good future planning.
Good future planning for us is, you're doing a subdivision. We need to determine the access.
I would love the language to protect you, saying, this board would like to see as few curb cuts as possible, and, you know, I, I understand that, but again, I don't know who I have as a tenant. If it's a medical office building, and they say we love the access, then I'm good with that. But the problem is, I just don't know who and what it is.
Yeah, we just keep talking in circles at this point. I don't know, I, I feel.
We're talking in circles. I mean, in the C3 commercial district, which is almost right to here, which really makes no difference, we only allow one curb cut every 1,200 feet of frontage.
So, we still have the curb cut.
On Epping Road, just, just up, just like a couple parcels up, where C3 starts, all the way to thing, our regulations require 1,200.
And I think that's what's.
So, like, we're talking, this is.
Right, the curb cut issue is the issue, and it's not one change.
It doesn't, like, so like, this is the Epping Road Strip Management Ordinance. To lessen congestion upon arterial streets and provide for the safe and orderly flow of traffic within a developing commercial area, these regulations tend to prescribe design standards for traffic access curb cuts. Each parcel shall have but one point of access to Epping Road unless it has more than 1,200 feet of frontage, in which case, one point of access is permitted for each 600 feet of frontage, if it has over 1,200. That, that's in a, you know, that's, that's the kind of thing that we're looking at here, and we're talking about a couple hundred feet, and we already have a major designed intersection that was designed to accommodate all this future development. I just.
Thank you.
I had mentioned this to them at the TRC, and I'm a little, I'm a little confused, because that's what was represented to the TRC. We are going to use this as access. This, you know, so I, I'm, this is kind of the first I'm hearing about now, an Epping, potential Epping Road curb cut. Because we had this conversation with the TRC, and you said, oh, no, access is gonna be off of 75. So it's a little confusing that I'm, I'm hearing something different.
Well, they wanna maintain their flexibility, obviously, Dave, you know what's happening here.
No, but that's why I asked.
What is the access?
I guess that's why I asked at the TRC.
So, do you guys need more time?
I, I think that if, if we were to move forward with the language that, you know, one curb cut is allowed.
Yep.
On, among the two.
Epping Road.
The two new parcels along Epping Road.
Yep.
As long as it could, the current one, or the proposed one, could be modified in the future, and just restrict it to this, the one access, we'd be okay with that.
Okay.
You're better with that than.
I think that's a good way to go. I mean, you got what you want, right here in front of us, but if you need to modify it.
You can.
And you can resolve it with your tenant, still have, we're not stopping that, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
But what we need to stop is a second one, that's all, guys.
That's where the.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And they, they would be.
I can see him writing quickly.
Relocation. Dave, would they be able to then, that widen that for two lanes coming and going, or is that too close to?
Oh, I think they can. I, I think they can, I mean, as long as you, as long as you design it, and show that you can safely make the turn, you can. I think the long-term vision of this in the, in the VHB corridor study, I think a median went down pretty much all the way through here, so there's no left-hand turns that solves that issue, except in a couple of openings. And it wouldn't be an opening for a private driveway, it would be an opening for Meeting Place.
Right.
It would be an opening for Columbus.
So, if they decided they wanted to use that for the other lot, and there is a median, then, then people are gonna have.
That's a whole way away, I don't wanna scare, I don't wanna scare people, but it was, we do have it on, on one of the plans, showing that in the VHB corridor study, because it's about access management, and that would be a whole big, it would be beyond this planning board, it would be probably very controversial and so forth, to do that, but it, it is shown on a plan that we have, you know, on a corridor study, we have, on a couple of different options. There's roundabouts in this area, we, you know, we do a couple roundabouts, I don't know if it's at this intersection, but I think that one might be, you know, for, for build-out development, to accommodate the future traffic, that's what we're trying to, you know, maybe not right now, but what's gonna be in the future if it's all built out.
Yeah, well, actually, I do have a, just a comment.
How did it get so late?
Can I make a, while, while he's writing, I'm on a tree committee in town, and one of my, one of our pet peeves, and it's for the health and, and health of the trees that are planted, you see this all over the place, but people are building tree mulch volcanoes at the bottom of the trees, which kills the tree, so just be aware of that, I mean, you probably are not included in that group of people, but there are.
What happens there?
Well, it just, it kills it.
We most, we most certainly will take good care of it.
Yeah.
No problem whatsoever.
You need the mulch, because it keeps mowers away from the bark, which, if the mowers get close, they start girdling.
The weed, the weed whack. The landscaper that I'm planning on having do this does all of our properties for us,
A landscaper that I'm planning on having do this does all of our properties for us, and he lives in New Fields, just on the other side of 101, so absolutely, no problem.
Rye Beach landscaping?
Yeah, we use, uh, his name is Kenny Swan.
Oh, okay, yeah, nice, good local guy.
There's a, there's a business down the street from this project that has.
Hey, we worked hard on this one, though.
Coming off.
We worked hard on this one.
I guess.
Alright. I think you still have to go with the first part of it.
Okay, go for it.
The, the, the future development of lot, well, wait a minute, wait, wait, wait a minute, maybe, maybe not, uh, well, no, okay, maybe I'll just say, the final, no, no, let's see how this works, because it, it's, if you move it, then there's no need to ma- make them utilize.
The easement?
Make them utilize, uh, the easement, make them utilize the access is over there, but what needs to exist.
The easement.
Correct, I think it should.
Yes.
Okay, so, so, forget about any.
Something like if in the event.
No, hear me out, let me see, final, the final subdivision plan shall show an access easement from Meeting Place Drive over lot 75 to lot 75-1, this condition shall not prevent the relocation of the one curb cut on Epping Road.
Can you repeat that last, then?
Fine, this condition shall not prevent the relocation of the one curb cut on Epping Road.
Okay.
So, all I'm saying here is, the easement will be provided from Meeting Place to the 75-1.
Yep.
And, but it's not preventing the relocation of the one curb cut on Epping Road.
Yes, the one that, that will be existing, that's, yes.
Yeah, I don't think it does anyway without even saying that, but.
I think that's what.
Shall not prevent the relocation of the one curb cut on Epping Road, and no further curb cuts shall be approved.
I started writing that.
Well, that should be in there.
No.
Alright.
Because otherwise, you can relocate it.
As no.
It's still added one.
Okay, further curb cuts shall be allowed, okay.
Thank you.
This condition shall not prevent the relocation of one curb cut on Epping Road, Epping Road, no further curb cuts shall be allowed.
Yep.
Okay.
So you guys can move it, if it makes sense.
Yep. Does that, that work for you guys?
Yeah, we're okay with that.
Okay, no.
So I read the other 10, right, like.
I don't think you did.
A half hour ago.
Yeah, maybe you did.
I did.
You only.
Or did I?
You read some of these.
Oh, no, that was the third one for the subdivision.
Yeah.
Right, we're on the subdivision.
Yeah.
So I read three, conditions of it for the one I just read, and then the two standard ones, and I always read about the DWG file and monumentation.
Would you mind just, I'm sorry, can you just read the conditions of the minor subdivision?
All three?
Yes.
Sure. DWG file of the plan set shall be provided to the town planner showing all property lines and monumentation prior to signing the final plans, this plan must be in NAD 1983, state plane, New Hampshire, FIPS, 2800 feet coordinates, two, all monumentations shall be set in accordance with section 9.25 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations prior to signing the final plans, and three, final subdivision plan shall show an access easement from Meeting Place Drive over lot 75 to lot 75-1, this condition shall not prevent the relocation of the one curb cut on Epping Road, no further curb cuts on Epping Road shall be allowed.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Just a minute, what about, you know, a meeting before construction begins, and are there a couple of the others you use?
Isn't that the site plan?
That's site plan.
Yeah.
There's, there's two things going on, there's a minor subdivision that you have to approve, and then there's a site plan.
We had to, we had to deal with the access with the subdivision.
Yes.
Because they decided to subdivide.
Yes.
Okay, so minor subdivision.
Exactly, if they didn't have to subdivide, it wouldn't be, this wouldn't be an issue, I wouldn't bring it up at this point, because it's one lot.
Right.
You know, that's.
Exactly.
But when you subdivide it, then.
Creating another lot, we have to.
Creating another lot, how are they gonna access?
Yep, so I'm gonna make a motion, minor subdivision motion, I move that the request of Tropic Star Development LLC Planning Board Case Number 2365 for minor subdivision approval be approved with the conditions as just read by Town Planner Dave Sharpe.
Second.
Second, did I hear that, Nancy?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, hand vote, right hand, that's this one, uh, those in favor, please, okay, by raising your right hand, those opposed, I have an extension, some extension, okay, that's uh, one, two, three, four, five, two, one, okay. Motion carries. Did you work for that bank, too?
Nope.
Oh, he's gotta read the conditions, wanna read the next condition?
Uh, I can, I'll just precursor it by saying it's the standard 10, I don't have any actual, any additional ones, I didn't hear anyone.
Wasn't in the plan?
Oh, yeah, I added that to the sta- one of the standards.
And the modified entrance, that doesn't have to be written in there, the modified entrance to.
What that building is?
To discourage left-hand.
Oh, yeah, I got that one.
Okay.
Right, I'm sorry, that's already in there.
It's getting late.
It's already 10.
Okay, thank you.
It's the nine standard conditions and driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Um, an electronic ASVIL plan with details acceptable to the town shall be provided prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, this plan must be in NDWG or DFX file format and in NAD 1983, state plane, New Hampshire, FIPS, 2800 feet coordinates, two, a pre-construction meeting shall be arranged by the applicant as contracted with the town engineer prior to any site work commencing, the following must be submitted for review and approval prior to the pre-construction meeting, the stormwater pollution prevention plan, if applicable, uh, be submitted and reviewed for approval by DBW and a project schedule and construction cost estimate, three, third-party construction inspection fees shall be paid prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting, four, all comments in the review letter from an Underwood Engineers dated July 13, 2023 shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner prior to signing the final plans, five, all outdoor lighting, including security lights, shall be downlit and shielded, so no direct light is visible from adjacent properties and or roadways, all outdoor lighting shall be equipped with dimmers to comply with section 9.20.4.4, six, the inspection and maintenance log and the stormwater management operation and maintenance plan dated April 25, 2023 with their latest revision dated June 23, 2023 shall be completed and submitted to the town engineer annually, honor before January 31st, this requirement shall be an ongoing condition of approval, seven, all applicable state permit approval numbers shall be noted on the final plans, all appropriate fees to be paid, including but not limited to sewer water connection fees, impact fees, inspection fees, prior to the issuance of a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, which is ever, whichever is applicable as determined by the town, eight, all landscaping shown on plan shall be maintained and any dead or dying vegetation shall be replaced, no later than the fall and growing season, as long as the site plan remains valid, this condition is not intended to circumvent the revocation procedures set forth in state statutes, nine, the applicant shall submit the land use and stormwater management information about the project using the PTAP online municipal tracking tool, the PTAP's middle must be accepted by DBW prior to the pre-construction meeting, and the right-in-only driveway access on Epping Road will be redesigned to the satisfaction of the town planner and town engineer to discourage left-hand turns into the site, and will be reviewed by VHB, the town's consultant traffic engineer at the applicant's expense.
Light, well, the light's dimming.
I already included that, yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Right, yeah, you heard that, right, that was in there, yeah, getting late.
It is getting, period.
It's very late.
Now, it's past the hour of 11, does the board feel capable of making a decision?
Do you want me to make a motion?
Sure.
Um, site plan motion, I move that the request of Tropic Star Development LLC Planning Door Case Number 2366 for site plan approval be approved with the conditions as noted by our town planner, Dave Sharpe. Second.
Move and seconded it, those in favor, please raise your hand, right hand, opposed, tensions, gentlemen, have fun.
Thank you very much, congratulations, one night, you did it, one night in Exeter.
No, not you.
It's our fault. This is the fast speed. Yeah, we just said yes right away. Good thing we didn't have any public input.
Oh, boy.
So one good thing, another. And I get your.
Yeah, you're lucky.
Right here. I don't know.
One hell of a shot. Yeah, alright, good luck.
Thanks, have a good night. We cabled the meeting minutes to when, are we gonna do that, the CIP, CIP, I can't even say. Oh, my gosh, the meeting minutes, we cabled them, are we gonna do it at the next meeting, the CIP meeting, or wait until August? The minutes that we didn't do, when will we do that?
Is August, you, you, you take the, you take your well-deserved summer holiday, the second Thursday of the month of July, and then the next meeting, August 10th, is dedicated to CIP.
Okay.
And then the next meeting after that is, you can put the minutes on the CIP meeting, you just tell me and I'll put whatever.
Oh, don't not take it very long. I would get it out of work.
There's that five-minute, or the three-minute meeting is one of them, and then.
I would say put it on our next meeting agenda, which will be the first one in August.
CIP.
Get the minutes taken care of.
Generally, don't we start 6:30 on that one?
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Sometimes it's good to, I mean, on that, you know, because it's, it can, yeah, and then, and all the staff is asked to be here, so, you know, some of them can just stick around, you know, for it, um, so I'll talk to the chair about that.
Okay.
But nobody here objects to that?
No.
Starting at, starting at the CIP meeting at 6:30.
As long as you're sort of dimming.
Are we good, are we, is we determined?
We have a motion.
So move.
It's really just them putting it on.
Second?
Yes.
Who's in second, anybody else in favor of adjourn?
Thank you, sir.